Okay, we'll start the meeting of the Committee of the Hall. If you have bear patience, we're going to have a live discussion tonight, it looks like. I call the meeting to order, and would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Barnes?
Here.
Mr. Bowersacks?
Here.
Ms. Chenoweth?
Present.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smye?
Here.
Ms. Stevenson?
Here.
Mayor Pressing?
Here.
Okay, are there any additions to the agenda that has been published? None? Okay, there's no additions, there's no deletions? Okay, do we have a staff report at this time? Yes.
I have an announcement, and as you all know, we're celebrating the 175th birthday of the city of Urbana, and we have a great committee that we're working with on birthday celebrations, the mayor and council member Roberts, among others, and we do have an event for March that I'd like to announce, it will be this Sunday, that's March 30th. The topic will be about Clark Robinson Griggs. You can find out all about Mr. Griggs, who is the man who brought the University of Illinois to Urbana. Clark Robinson Griggs, Urbana mayor and state legislator. So we will have a short presentation by Tom Kasich with the News Gazette, and Alona Makovsky, who's a local historian, about Mr. Griggs. We will also have refreshments and music by Michael Kamen, and this will be from 2:00 to 3:00 p.m. at the Levis Faculty Center. It's on the third floor, on Illinois Street in Urbana, and it's free and the public is welcome, and this is honoring the founding of the University of Illinois and its location in Urbana in March 1867. So again, this Sunday, 2:00 to 3:00 p.m., and we have some posters that we've produced, and we'll be having this in the newspaper and other venues, so spread the word. See you then.
Do you want to talk about the insert?
Yeah, we're also launching our Urbana history project. There will be an insert in the News Gazette with some of the early stories of Urbana, and that's just the beginning, because we could put them on our yet-to-be-revised webpage. So if anyone has an interesting story about Urbana that you would like to add to the official history, let us know.
Yes, and Lynn Barnes?
I just wanted to note that I dropped off at your desk a visitor's guide, it's the brand-new one for 2008, 2009, from the Convention and Visitors Bureau, and there's some great pictures of Urbana in there.
The Urbana birthday energy just keeps growing. Okay, pull the cards. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of our previous meeting, which was dated on March 10th, 2008. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Okay, Lynn Barnes makes the motion, and Mr. Lewis seconds it. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved. Time for public input, we have a considerable amount, many people wish to speak at the time of the event, but we have two topics, and we will have some people who wish to speak before. Let's start with public arts. A person who wished to speak at this time in the meeting is Mark Ensland. Can you come forward, please? And, you know, if you could limit this to the briefest possible comments, because we have so many people who wish to speak. I will try to be brief. Thank you.
So, I am Mark Ensland, and I am a composer and actor and promoter of arts events. I'm a member of the Celebration Company, and teach at the School for Designing a Society. And because of my involvement with the station theater, I'd just like to recognize how great it is that Urbana has supported that, and there's just a lot of wonderful things happening in the arts that the city supports. When I graduated from the University of Illinois with my degrees in music composition, I chose to stay in this town. I probably should have gone elsewhere, according to various criteria, but I decided to stay here. And what I, the reasons that I stay here are for encouragement. What artists need and what they supply is encouragement. Creativity encourages creativity. Many people know that problem-solving of various kinds requires creative approaches. Business requires creativity. Teaching, raising children, requires lots of creativity. And I want to address how the city could play a role in this, which is often legislation and government is restricting people's behavior. "Can't do this, you shouldn't do this, we want to protect people from that," and it is unfortunately rare that policy can have this kind of encouraging role, where there is public money and will put to having endeavors brought forth or encouraged. And the arts is a huge area in which that is one of the main focuses. So I want to speak in favor of the proposal, which I've read through, and I think it's just a really very well-written proposal that augments and complements the activities that the city of Urbana has already been doing, and putting money behind to encourage the arts of the various forms. There are these 10 goals, which are marvelous, for having a broad stream of funding for the arts, for making sure that there's a connection between the public and artists, that there's an educational component, there's a component that encourages care for the environment. And one of the functions that an artist has is to look, these wonderful things that are there, artists will look and see something that's not there. And this is something that we actually want from the artist, is to look at a blank place and say, "Hey, there could be something else here that we have not seen before." And sometimes there's an environment in which that kind of look is, "Oh, really? You want to trouble us with that?" What's really nice is when someone looks at this unused, underutilized place and says, "Let's do this," and they're met with, "Yeah, in fact, I could kick in a little something to help with that." One little example, I'm still trying to be brief with this. There was an international student at the university named Gosa Gebre Selasi, from Ethiopia, and he was also a painter, and he decided that on Saturday afternoons, he would have what he called a vibosphere. So in his house, he would make this invitation to anybody to come, and he would cook some garlic in the kitchen, and make very strong coffee, and put on some very loud music, and supply paint and paper or canvas. And that was pretty much it.
30 seconds.
Okay. And what that did was it encouraged people who said, "I kind of like to paint," and there's these little stumbling blocks, which he took care of. I helped him by paying for the paints. This is something that would be, for instance, I see in the proposal that there are these mini-grants, that's the kind of thing. It's not going to support Gosa, but it does help his project happen if he could get a little bit of a grant to help with paints for a project like that. So I strongly support the proposal as it is. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for keeping within time segment. Another person who would like to speak on the same topic before the topic comes to the agenda is Susan Parentis?
Grant.
Please come forward.
My name is Susan Parenti. I am an experimental music composer and a playwright. I've received a Fulbright for music composition. I was chosen to study at the Accademia di San Cecilia in Rome with Alfredo Petrasi. I've received innumerable Illinois Arts Council grants. I received a wireless grant from the American Composer Forum. And I'm not telling you this in order to toot my horn, and if I did, I would toot probably a French horn, my favorite horn, but rather to indicate that I am a successful artist in that internationally and globally, and also nationally, I have done things and had consequences. And I have been part of the arts task force, because what is crucial is that this is arts, not only so that there's arts in the public, but so that there is art, so that we have a public. Let me just spend a little minute of my precious time on that distinction. The proposal that we are making is in addition to 40 North, in addition to Cranert. It's in addition, not a substitution. It does something that they aren't doing. And we're glad of what they're doing, but we studied what they're doing, we studied many different proposals of arts in different cities, and we saw that clearly we needed an arts program that would enable a citizen, a business, or a public to make initiations of problems for which working with an artist would solve something. So an arts public proposal that we're proposing, lots of Ps, by Susan Parenti, a third P, is Peter Piper. The arts proposal that we're proposing is able to come from three different channels. So a teacher at uni high, for instance, could decide that they want to create a play with a playwright against racism. Someone could decide that they want to, a building, a business could decide that they're really looking for mosaics in the front, so they could initiate an arts proposal. This is crucial, and it's not done by any of the other facilities. We are facing a time in which things are going to recede and depress. Recession and depression. And we need to not recede, we need to go forward, and we need to not depress. We need to have courage that our citizenry would get involved publicly, not only as applauding, but also using it, sending their grandkids to have free piano lessons, et cetera. So we're trying to use this as a vehicle so that the public, the citizenry, becomes involved in this city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There are some other people who are going to significant, significant their interest in these objects, but not speak, and I'll read those later. I'll go now to people who wish to speak before on the next issue on the agenda, which is the cellphone drive-in question. And the first person who would speak would be Linda Lorenz.
I'm Linda Lorenz. I commute daily to work, to the library, to the grocery store, wherever I'm going.
Okay.
I come through Lincoln and Green, and I observe people turning on the red light when they're not supposed to, and my pet peeve, I see people driving east towards Lincoln Square, coming out of the middle lane, and butting in in front of people, and it's my pet peeve, and I ask for a yield sign, and it doesn't work. There is nothing more frightening when you're riding in traffic and observing these kinds of problems, and having snow and ice and everything else, to see somebody driving and talking on a cellphone, it is just so freaky, and you know they are not paying attention, and they're going to run over you on your bicycle. So I would like to see us do something really great and not have another person run over and killed by somebody with talking on a cellphone. Please.
Thank you very much. There are two more cards that were not filled out yet, not that I yell cards, but I'm going to call for two more people who are going to speak on the public arts question again.
Good evening, City Council. I'm very thrilled to be here. I wanted to speak very briefly, and I'll respect time. The importance of the public arts, I am not an artist, but I am one who is married to an artist, but I'm also one who comes from a cultural experience that art is critical to education for children. And I wanted to speak to the issue of not just a private art experience that my son experiences and my husband experiences, but the one reason why I tell people I live in Urbana, as opposed to other cities that I won't name, is that we do things like bike path commissions, right? So that our people can ride their bikes, walk safely, and have an atmosphere of small-town in a large-town feeling. We do things like make more green space, we do things like the boneyard. Those are things that, to me, are the reasons why I remain in this community, and one of the important things is to continue in a line of promotion, a city that really respects life and gives towards life. I would have to say that the presentation that the gentleman did for the new site on University and Lincoln is not art to me. It's big, it's, you know, I know it's going to give some access to retail, but I think we've been retailed out. If we're going to continue to build all of these stores and coffee shops and things of that nature, we don't want to wipe out the small things that matter to people like myself, which is having access to the art, public space, public art, and funding those things adequately as we give all of the tax rebates and refunds to developers to develop these big businesses. I want that to remain. And the last thing I'll say is the issue of the banning of the mobile phone usage, however, I do agree that there's a serious hazard, mobile phones cause. I would ask that, as was pointed out in some of the other ordinances, that we look at the language and the enforcement issue that surrounds banning the use of electronic devices, and what that impact will have on our police department on the issue of enforcement. And so enforcement would be an area that I would like for you all to consider. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. And also Jalani Sadeek? Welcome.
My name is Jalani Sadeek. I live at 1108 North Bucey Avenue, Urbana. I want to thank Mayor Laura Pressing, Danielle Chenoweth, and Brian Broksa, Bowersacks, for their personal support of education and my personal arts. I would like to share a piece of my original poetry from my book that I've written with a couple of friends of mine. It's "When I Get the Money." "When I get the money, I would like to get a new car. When I get the money, I will live with my Native American brother on a reservation when I get the money. I will give to the deaf and blind so they can have a good life. I'll buy a school for C.A. I'll buy a car and a house for my friends and family when I get the money. When I get the money, I will fund the arts." And I want the city of Urbana to fund the public arts.
Thank you, sir. Okay, there was one more individual who wanted to speak before the time of the item, and that is Georgia Morgan. Georgia?
Georgia.
Georgia.
Just like the state.
Okay. I saw an i in there that it didn't exist, apparently.
Drivers with cellphones impair themselves in three ways. The most obvious way is if they're holding the cellphone. If you're holding cellphone in one hand, you've only got one hand to drive with. If you have to turn in a hurry, something's going to happen, it isn't going to be good, your car's going to go where you didn't mean it to. The obviously, obvious solution to that is hands-free cellphones, where you have something stuck in your ear, I don't know how you dial the things, I think you have to use your hands for that, but at least you don't have to hold it up to your ear while you're talking. But that still leaves two senses impaired. First, your ears are impaired. You can't hear what's going on. Maybe it's a siren behind you or on a side street. You're not going to see what's coming until it's on top of you, and maybe you're in the wrong place to let an emergency vehicle go through. Maybe it's somebody honking at you because you're in the wrong lane, you're going the wrong way down a one-way street, I don't know. The third thing that's impaired, under all these scenarios, is your attention. Your attention is still impaired even if you have got both hands on the wheel if you're talking on the phone. Professor Art Kramer in the Psychology Department at the university did studies of precisely this phenomenon, which show that a person talking on a cellphone is paying less attention to the road than a person talking to a passenger in the car. When you've got, when you're talking to a passenger in the car, the passenger is almost as aware as you are of the road conditions, of the traffic. The passenger knows when to shut up and let the driver drive. The person on the other end of the phone line can't see the road, can't see the traffic, and goes blankly on the conversation, demanding, requesting attention that the driver doesn't have to spare. So I think it would be a very good thing to limit cellphone driving in the city. I think the ordinance does this just for emergency situations, and I think that's appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So that concludes the number of people who wanted to speak before the item came on the agenda, and we'll get back to many other people who'll be talking in a few minutes. I guess that without any other public input at this time, we'll go to the specific items, and starting with Agenda Item 5, a discussion of the public arts program and commission. Do we have a staff report at this point to upgrade our information? And then we'll have public input, and then we'll have discussion.
Anna Hawke-Cultures is also here this evening to help answer questions. There were two pieces of follow-up information that we were asked to bring back for this meeting, and these were not in the packet, I apologize. We were continuing to work on these, but they are at your places. The first item is a record of previous budget expenditures on arts-related items, and so Anna's worked on this and got back for about the last, including this year, we have about five years' worth of record here, and probably some things that we may have forgotten. There's, at the end of the spreadsheet, just some notes about some of the indirect expenditures as well. So that's provided for your information. And also, this evening, I passed out a list of some of the duties that a public arts coordinator might fulfill, and of course, as promised, like any good job description, the last one is performs other related duties as assigned. Very important, so. And I know there's some other information forthcoming this evening, but those were the two follow-up items from our last committee discussion. Any questions on these?
Appreciate your time, Libby, on that. Does anybody have a question for Libby at this point?
Also have nice-bound copies of the community input report.
Okay. Okay. All right, I guess we'll go to public comment, and then we'll have a comment up here on the committee. First, I guess what I'll do is read people who have written and don't want to address the committee personally, but they say that they're, have an opinion. And this is Sarah Scott, 407 South Johnson, says that she supports public arts program. Also supporting is Daniel Lewart at 310 North Bucey Avenue. And for the record, also Mike Lopez, or Lopet, I think it is, at 3208, well, Botzery Drive, I'm not sure how to pronounce that, can't read it quite, in support of public arts. Oh, wait, that's not it. That was a cellphone. Got the wrong stack. All right, and Kilo Matzen, pronounced Coilo. Thank you, I read that late. Says that they are in support of the Public Arts Commission. All right, those people who wish to speak at this time, let's start with Dr. Corville Gaudison. Hi, you better pronounce your name.
Camille Gaudison.
Camille. All right, please come up, sir. Oh, yes, it's at now, okay.
Hi, my name's Camille Gaudison, I'm honored to address you. I didn't realize my name would, I should have given you a phonetic spelling there.
That's all right. I don't read French too well.
It's, I've been, background, I live in 902 South Orchard in Urbana, I've been a bicycle commuter in Urbana for 17 years, and the last five years I've run the driving simulator at the Beckman Institute. That's where Art Kramer ran his studies on driver distraction. This isn't an academic forum, and I'm not an expert in the literature, but for five years I've been exposed to both the raw data on driver distraction and papers published in my own facility and in others. And let's just say, as a bicycle commuter, the data frightens me enough that I don't ride where cars can reach me anymore. It's just too frightening. If I can cite one study, this one was done in Australia, that never mind the mental models, you know, is it attention, reduced reaction time, never mind that, they just looked at emergency room admissions and were you talking on the phone in the previous 10 minutes? And the correlation is astounding. I'll invite you to look up the literature yourself, I won't try to present that to you in five minutes. But it frightens me enough to change my behavior. I also invite you to look at injuries and fatalities that come from drivers, traffic in general, distracted or not, compared to pretty much anything that's more fashionable in the news. I don't need to tell you what's fashionable in the news these days, but, you know, 40,000 deaths on the road every year, pretty much steadily since we've been keeping national statistics, you know, it's just, we're just, you know, whatever, this is business as usual, it should not be. Let's see what we can do about it. Some laws, you know, are just common sense, you don't need to pass a law against using a cellphone while cutting somebody's hair. I mean, you know, if a haircutter did that, you know, they would lose their customers, you know, you don't need to pass a law against that. Or, you know, using a cellphone while lifeguarding, or using a cellphone while being in a city council meeting. I mean, you know, these things are just common sense. I'm not sure exactly how this plays out in terms of a law against using a cellphone while driving. To me, it's common sense, to others, you know, maybe they think they're special, or you know, they're better, you know, like Wobegon effect, you know, they're, you know, better than average. But the one tricky thing about this really is, if you're going to legislate about this, you know, which electronic devices are truly a distraction? How much of this is up to a traffic officer's discretion? You know, what is a distraction, what isn't? You know, can't we just say, "Oh, that's, you know, dangerous driving, or irresponsible driving, or disrespectful driving?" Those are my points.
Different topic, yeah. Thank you.
We got a lot of emails about this, and I don't know if you're the one that sent the studies, but I think everybody agrees that this is a dangerous thing, but it's a question of what can you do about it. And I'm concerned about what jurisdictions have passed laws and how have those laws worked. And one of the studies that I saw very quickly this afternoon said that there was a reduction in accidents right after the law was passed, and then pretty much they floated back up again to the usual level. So are you aware, from your exposure to this topic, of any place that has a very good ordinance and enforcement program?
I wish I did, I'm sorry, I don't.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, go ahead.
With the research work that you have done, could you help to illuminate this question of whether a hands-free headset with a cellphone is comparable in terms of the danger to a cellphone that's held up to your ear by one hand? Or is that not something that you've looked at in the work that you have? And certainly I've read everything that has been given to me, I just, I'm trying to, I'm trying to trace back all the citations to, okay, that's the insurance, you know, industry, what does that mean, et cetera? So I'm trying to understand, but it's difficult from a common sense perspective, and also from my own experience, to see the difference, to see, to believe that there's no difference between holding a cellphone in your hand and fuddling with it and having a hands-free, you know, cellphone experience, or whatever.
The longer reaction time, that I think is the biggest cause to, you know, greater risk of accidents, and I think that that explains why hands-free or not doesn't make much of a difference. It's not so much that your hand is there, you know, you can do other things, you know, you can smoke, you can eat a salad, you know. People, you know, people sell cars and design cars based on how well you can eat your lunch while driving, I mean, but a conversation can demand so much attention that, you know, to switch your focus from that, you know, that takes two-tenths of a second. You know, if you're eating, you know, how many different tasks can you do at once? You know, can you do two spatial tasks at once? You know, one fun thing we had was, okay, you're driving in the simulator around the model of campus, okay, what's the building which is two buildings west of the Illini Union, and you happen to be driving south at the time? That's two. That's two spatial tasks at once. That's pretty hard. Can you do two linguistic tasks at once? You know, follow several conversations at once? That's really hard. Can you do a linguistic and a spatial task at the same time? You know, like driving, you know, can you stay in your lane while talking? That, this is what we're trying to really, you know, put hard numbers on. But, you know, having one hand occupied, we're not seeing numbers, seeing that that's a big deal.
A big deal compared to the other. Okay. As a 16-year-old, I used to change into my soccer uniform while driving. This is, this research has given me pause about that, taking those leaps and bounds.
We should wrap this up. Thank you very much. And actually, we're going to go back to the topic of public art. That forum, that slip got mixed into the other pile. Two people who also wish to address and support the public arts are Elizabeth Simpson. Can you speak? And then following that will be Chris Evans.
Good evening, everyone, again, and thanks for your sustained attention through the millions of people who, I appreciate living in such a vibrant city that people want to speak. I briefly want to just jump into the future. Last time I came before you with my enthusiasm, I spoke about how frugal might be a way to describe artists in terms of being creative. And I know there's concerns about finances. The difference between public arts as I see it and community arts and professional arts, both of which are very valuable, is that a lot of community people end up, they're not relying on it for their living and so they're able to pull things off on a shoestring. And that's what I do. I took what my understanding was of the, both the mini-grants and then the other aspects of the proposal in terms of incorporating public arts and came up with a retrospective of what we might say happened in 2008, maybe 2009. And I found it really interesting with Ms. Pressing's comments about Urbana history initiatives and also Ms. Parenti's comments, which I felt were about investment. People want to be in a place they feel reflects them and they feel invested in. Also, when Atkins Group was talking about why they want a color sign, right? It's when things are interesting to be around, folks want to go where that is. So, interesting. So looking back at 2008 or '09, there was an album of songs created by people in Urbana about Urbana. Okay? So that was one of the public arts initiatives. People all, you know, from all around Urbana, composed little songs, sent them in, we made a CD. And it cost, and I did run these numbers to figure out what it would cost, maybe $250 for a run of 200 or 300 CDs for free. There was also, of course, a continuation of the large public art cardboard sculptures sponsored by Chris Evans, who I think is here, featured in Lincoln Square, which needs some jazzing up, let's face it. There was also a personal history sidewalk tour, which consisted of various people in Champaign, Urbana, or Urbana, taking chalk and drawing the history of their life. For example, here's where my grandma and grandpa met and proposed to each other. Here's where I toasted my first degree. Or here's where I decided I was going to run for city council. And then there'd be a book of maps of those tours that would be compiled, also very, he's like $300. There's a tile mosaic that was put up at the mini-park outside of the iron post. People came and the coordinator of it made it such that everyone could just paint a little tile like this and then would put it up and it made one giant picture, which depicted, again, an event in Urbana history. And there was also a series that actually is still running called The People's History of Urbana, where folks identify events or people in Urbana and then make silkscreen posters. Well, there's an artist who renders a depiction of that. And then people get together and learn how to silkscreen, which is pretty easy. And they silkscreen posters, which get put around town in the commemorative things that get sold, et cetera. And also are made into flags that get put on the signposts. So each of these five initiatives, probably about $400, $300 each. And that is a sampling of what had happened in 2008, 2009, given that this initiative went forward.
Thank you very much for your imaginary trip.
I don't deal in imagination. I deal in reality. Thanks.
Okay. Reality. All right. And then Chris Evans.
I'm Chris Evans. I work at the IMC and I occasionally exhibit at international galleries. And I have a degree in painting from the University of Illinois. I want to, first, I want to thank you for just considering public art. It's a pretty amazing forward step, just to be thinking about it and considering it. And I really appreciate you giving it a chance. I want to encourage you tonight to pass the public arts funding because I think public art is valuable to have and it can be the creation of a healthy civic life that people want to be around. I think you're very correct to be concerned that public art should not be about a few artists copying a government check. I think that's a legitimate concern. I helped teach a public arts class at the University of Illinois with Professor Christian Martins, who has a piece at the Beckman and has a piece in the Meadowbrook Park as well as worldwide. And she taught me that public art is about art in life for the public. And public art can be a way to improve our quality of life. And, you know, much to my surprise, I see examples where art and entertainment has proven to be quite a moneymaker. I was surprised in 2006 that 500 people packed the Virginia Theater to pay $25 a ticket to listen to Roseanne Barr talk for just about an hour. I noticed the football stadium is being renovated to the tune of $116 million, just so more people come watch an 18-year-old catch a touchdown pass, hopefully dressed in orange and blue. And if you would have told me that, you know, let's have a Chicago art critic come down and show a few old movies that nobody cares about anymore, that that would be, you know, a point of destination where thousands across the country come to see that, I would have been surprised. So I think art has established itself as a legitimate commerce part of our economy. I think we'd get worried that enabling artists to work means that we might get assaulted with, you know, butt-ugly abstract blobs that confound more than they beautify and enlighten. And I think that concern can be addressed by having public input and creating democratic processes and selection processes that take into account the needs and the desires of the community. I think, I really believe that this, you and the public should have a voice in what kind of art gets made. I think that's very important. And when, you know, when, in this town, we have just an enormous, almost lopsided amount of really talented and internationally first-class artists. We have a lot of talented artists in this town who are responsible and know that they're making work for the public and not just themselves. And when Urbana becomes a point of destination and people are attracted to linger in an area where there's something interesting to look at and there's, you know, good music to listen to, like, you know, retail shops and restaurants and businesses want to be around that stuff where the people are. And studies are beginning to show that businesses want to relocate to towns where their employees enjoy the town they're living in. And that's been pretty well-proven. I'm going to, really quick, blow through 50 quick ideas for, no, seriously. I mean, just, I sat down and just came up with 50 ideas on what we could do with money for about public art. I will do it fast. Number one, decorate the dumpsters of Urbana. Have professional artists that could be assigned to beautify the dumpsters in the downtown Urbana area. Street musicians on the corners of downtown. An Urbana jazz festival. Outdoor theater presentations in Crystal Lake Park. A public fountain and a wading pool. A skate park for skateboarders. A gigantic mural on the east side of the building that overlooks the parking deck. Mural contests where the public votes for the winning design. Design a park on the southwest corner of the courthouse. An innovated public miniature golf course designed by sculptors and landscape architects. Flags for the downtown area. Talent show in Lincoln Square among area youth. Sculpture contests where the public votes up for the site theme and the winning entry. Poetry slams in Lincoln Square Village. Civic groups and school classes and organizations competing in a cardboard sculpture contest for exhibit all over downtown. A local film festival where participants are all Urbana residents that make original short films to be broadcast on UPTV. We could have a public songwriting contest for an Urbana anthem, a town song celebrating Urbana. A publication of a bimonthly literary magazine where the authors of fiction and poetry are all Urbana residents. A senior citizen prom where the 65 and overs could have a formal ballroom dance in Lincoln Square. I'll leave you the list if you, I mean, it goes on and on. I mean, but seriously, we, you know, we have a chance to do something good and have, and bring something to the town that transcends just getting drunk in a bar. I mean, we, we need, you know, we need civic life and this is a great chance to do something really for everybody. And I think your concern about making sure that it just doesn't get cornered off to a bunch of specialists and some weirdo things happen, I think that's legitimate concern and we don't need to do that. And we can create a democratic process where we can avoid that sort of thing. So I'll close it there.
Thank you for your advocacy. All right. And that wraps up the public input on the topic of Public Arts Program and Commission. So I open this up to discussion on the council. Danielle Chenoweth.
Thanks. I passed out a couple of pieces of paper and I just wanted to give some, a little bit of overview of what I passed out. I appreciate the attention that the mayor and council members have given to the public arts program and I want to underline that I think we should take the time necessary. What's that? Oh, yeah, I passed out, I put it next to you. To establish a program that is well-thought-out and sustainable. So I plan on deferring the vote on public arts tonight after we've had some discussion. I'll do it right away when we finish discussion. And I would suggest that we spend tonight answering questions that have been raised so far and the staff did do that with some of the questions that came up last time. And also raise any additional questions and try to focus on, okay, what's outstanding, what are outstanding questions? And then at the next committee, the whole moving on the actual ordinance and program documents. One thing I want to make clear upfront is that this program does not belong to me, the task force, or any of us. It actually belongs to the people of Urbana and we're stewards for their interest in doing this. And so in, with that picture, I feel like the best way to be stewards is for us to carefully review the local community needs assessment, which is this nicely bound document here. And I know that we get a lot of paper thrown at us and I know it's really difficult sometimes to go through everything. And I just want to urge you to take a look at this because this is what the public said that they were interested in. And of course, it wasn't all 38,000 residents of Urbana, but there certainly was a number of forums and so I think it's important. In addition, if you don't happen to get to this, I have asked the staff, and I talked to the mayor today, about, about the staff presenting on this a little bit and also presenting some of the background that led to the decisions. Now, it's true that the council makes decisions about what we're going to pass and it's our right to change what has come before us from the task force. But I think it's important to know the reasoning, like, what's the research that backs up the things we did? And then if we have concerns about that, if we don't think that's the right direction, that's fine. But I, I think that there, in some ways, is a kind of, I think, there wasn't much of a presentation on the public arts program last time because I think there was an assumption that we had passed it out in January, we passed it out again and you read it. And I think some of the background information is missing. So I've asked for that to happen. We, we do have several bookshelves of information about the arts and it's been really difficult to know what pieces of paper to put in front of you. So I think it's important for us to use that knowledge base wisely to make our decisions. I did want to just say a couple of things in response to this document, which is the funding grid that staff passed out tonight. I think that this grid shows, since our budgeted amount for last year for the arts was about $190,000 and the year before, it depends on if you include the clock tower courthouse or not. It could either be considered 36 or the clock on the courthouse was 15,000. So if you add that, then it would be 41,000 was the year before. And if you, if you look back in history, we were actually spending something between sometimes five, sometimes 15, sometimes 20 with the former administration and council. And so I think this council has clearly demonstrated, we support the arts, we're ramping this up. And it's interesting because I was looking at the website yesterday and I noticed that actually the website says we already have a program. It says the city of Urbana already, you know, has a public arts program. And there are all these things that we're doing in terms of the gallery district incentive and in terms of all of the things that are listed here that we've been doing for the arts. I think what, I think it's important to see what is being added to what it is that we're doing already. What's the distinction? And I would say that it's not so much that it's providing significant additional funding to what it is that we're looking at, but we formalize, but the program formalizes a structure for our arts, it formalizes a structure for our arts investment that increases public participation and discussion. I think this piece is really key. If you look at this list, this list, these are great programs. I completely support them. And it, there wasn't a mechanism by which we had public discussion and input, other than at times, things would come to council, you know, at the end point. But mostly, mostly, you know, it was staff decisions to do particular things and I've supported what they do. But I think when we look at what best practices are around the nation, it's that public input component that's going to be really important for us. The second thing this proposal does is it focuses city arts funds on a specific set of public art schools each year. So if you look at this list, there's a lot of different things that we've been doing and we're kind of scattershot approach to things. And I think by, by having a fund that accumulates dollars over time and by having a plan that goes through a process with a commission where the public can have input, then comes to council and the public again has the opportunity to have input. And then that plan is a guiding force for the arts into the future for that year. And so we can anticipate what's going to happen. And we can see, we can kind of match what's going to happen with what our current priorities are. So the second thing I wanted to point out to you is, this, I sent out two documents. One is called Public Arts: How Does It Compare to What We Spend Now? And it's not actually what we spend now on the arts because I knew that staff was preparing that. What I did instead is I put together a list just by looking through past budgets. And this is, this is either annual, this is like an annual expenditure, it's a one-time project expenditure. And there's a few cases where it's over two to three years and that's noted. But this is the kind of thing that we've spent on beautification so that we begin to see what's reasonable in terms of expenditures for things that are similar to what the arts would provide to our community. And of course, you know, we, we chose to do brick sidewalk maintenance, which is about $700,000 over a course of three years. We spent $200,000 on boneyard design, $325,000 on downtown streetscape in one year. We actually had nine phases of that and it was several million dollars that we did. $75,000 on Cunningham Beautification Study. We did $100,000 on library design and consultant. $40,000 on the mini-park at Elmen Race for the full improvements, including the stonework. $27 on Philo Road preliminary design fee. 20% on landscaping on Philo Road. 60% on Kerr Avenue, excuse me, 60,000 on Kerr Avenue plans. We spent $82,000 a year with the convention and visitors bureau payments. $55, roughly, $1,000 to their Urbana Business Association for events and arts-related things, primarily. $50,000 to $80,000 is our annual expense for audiovisual equipment for chambers and the, and UPTV. $20,000 for a comprehensive plan publication. $50,000 for farmers market costs. $300,000 for library books. And it goes on. I did include our beloved leaf pickup, which costs us $72,000. And waste processing fees in one year, we spent $101,000. Also, we recently looked at Philo Road beautification, which I do support. And it calls for significant funds, which I do have some concerns about. $106,000 in shrubs, grass, lawn and flowers and their installation. $5,000 in boulders excluding installation. $8,000 in ornamental additions to four light poles and about $20,000 to $40,000 additional dollars for annual maintenance of the beautification efforts. So I want us to look at, what, what do we spend on beautification efforts? And not all art is about beauty, but I think that that's kind of the closest thing that we can look at. And so we can talk about what's reasonable. We just spent $21,000 for University Avenue design work. So the second document is where will the money come from? And actually, we can't totally answer that question because we need to look at the budget as a whole. But I do want to say that we already fund the arts and we mostly fund it through TIF funds. We already fund staff, arts publications, boneyard support, gallery district incentives and one-time grants like the station theater that Mr. Enslin was talking about, using the TIF funds. So these, there are sufficient TIF funds TIF funds to cover the Public Arts Program, and funding of the arts is an allowable use of the funds. Of course, you know, we fund something, that means we can't fund something else. But in terms of what's available in the TIF funds, there is funds available at, at the amounts that we're looking at. I very much support the mayor's idea of helping to fund the Public Arts Trust Fund with a share of profits of downtown events, and looking at other revenue sources that we can build up over time, because TIFs expire. And so it's not going to be something that's around forever. So we have to be thinking long-term, but we certainly can get started now with the TIFs. I did have a short, I will say shamelessly propaganda piece that has eight ideas for how we could fund the arts, how we could cut existing expenditures and fund the arts. I will say that looking through the budget, Urbana is mostly lean. There's not a lot of fat. We're not, you know, we don't have a lot of bureaucratic layers in the city. But I do, I would say we could have less oil, more art by looking at producing our own biodiesel and funding our fleet that way. We could sell excess fuel to MTD, UofA, and Champaign, and possibly open up a new revenue stream for the arts. And area factories like Kraft, which is spelled wrong in this, but area factories like Kraft produce, and I did look at how much grease they produce, and it's significant enough that we could do something like that. It's going to take some time to explore, but that's something we can look at. We budgeted $300,000 in fuel last year. So if we're looking for money, that's one place we can look. We could have less paper, more arts. We could cut all mailing costs to council and commissions unless requested. We could combine the mailings of the sewer benefit and recycling taxes and reduce the mailing cost by half, saving $5,800 annually was my estimate, based on the number of households in the 2000 census. Better, we could actually allow residents to register their email online and slowly gather emails through the website, et cetera. And then one month before the tax is due, we could send out an email, which costs nothing, and say, hey, why don't you pay your taxes online, the, the recycling and the sewer benefit tax? Then basically, that database, whoever doesn't pay is dumped to basically a mail merge that sends just to those people who didn't pay online. That's a significant reduction of funds. If we look at how much we're spending, it's about six grand every time we do mailing, and we do two. So that's, that's something that we could, we could reduce and make money for arts. We could have less cars, more arts. We could do a carpool. Last year, we spent 46,000 to repair and replace cars, that doesn't include fuel, that are sometimes used, not excluded, not including public works, which is used daily, and building maintenance, which is used daily, but some of the cars that aren't used daily. We could have more prairie plants, more art. Instead of having annual plantings in downtown, we could go to perennial plants, which the annuals need watering and hand planting, and this is very costly. We could have less energy waste and more art. We could look at turning streets lights on later and off earlier, and look at what kind of savings compared to what we would be paying in the future. We could have more automation of services and more arts. So people who park in the deck could pay automatically rather than to an attendant, and if there are issues, they can pick up a phone that's at the deck and call the civic center where there's a person stationed and ask, ask questions. We could have less duplication, more art. We could look at combining duplicate processes between the civic center and libraries, such as reserving and using space. And we could have less mass-produced goods, and we could have more unique art. So when funding beautification efforts, we should consider hiring artists to do unique work rather than purchasing mass-produced items, which has been our common way of doing things, like decorative pavers and street lamps. And if it's local artists, the money stays local, whereas when we buy pavers, et cetera, you know, my guess is if we buy them at Menards, we're buying in Champaign. And it's also the case that much of that money goes elsewhere. So the last piece I just want to point out is this is a document called Working Together, which is done by the Illinois Arts Alliance Foundation. And it talks about the economic impact of the arts in Champaign County. When I said to you previously that the arts is responsible for more economic activity in the county than sports, that came from this report. And I think even the people who did this report were surprised by that. So there was a total annual economic impact, and this was, I believe, 2002, of $33.7 million related to the arts. And you can read more about that, that study here and kind of look what they, look at what they were incorporating. So I guess I would underline at this point that there's some outstanding issues on the table, so I think we should move this to the committee. And I think those issues have to do with funding, funding sources and decision-making. I don't think we're far away from having some semblance of a consensus on it, but I do think that we should hear from staff, we should hear from you on what questions you may have, and we should then hear from staff in more detail about the background of the program at the next committee of the whole.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Is there other input from the committee of the whole members at this time? Charlie?
I would comment that some of the items on the budget are fairly large one-time expenses. We probably should look at some, some averaging here to, you know, it's a pretty big jump going from 36 or 51, depending on whether you count in the clock tower, you know, from one year to 190,000 another year. But 70,000 of that is, is the brick treatment that we've been saving money up for. So, so how many years does that, does that, does that represent of savings to do these projects? So some of these numbers probably should be averaged out a bit, just to be a little more realistic. But, but it is a substantial amount of money. We are spending on the art. We have increased it. It does look like we have a program. So I'd like to see this wrapped up as quickly as we can.
Other comments? Is there then a motion at this point? Yes, Danielle?
I make a motion to send, can I do both at the same time? Okay. Make a motion to send the, both the Public Arts Program and Commission, and an ordinance establishing a Public Arts Commission and permanent Public Arts Program to the next committee of the whole. Second.
Okay, we've had a, a motion to send the discussion of the Public Arts Program and the ordinance creating the Public Arts Commission and a permanent program to the next committee of the whole meeting, seconded by Lynn Barnes. Discussion?
Yeah, quick question. Ron's here. I don't know, is, does anybody want to touch on the, the ordinance differences, or is it not worth talking about these because this is still going to do some, undergo some more review?
Yes.
More review? Wait?
We'll wait. Because there has, the mayor has done some restructuring of the ordinance itself. So discussion on that? We'll be waiting till next time. So, okay, I guess we take a vote then. Another discussion? Those in favor of the motion and forwarding this to the next committee of the whole, you so indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, so we'll appear then on our next committee agenda. Thank you very much. This takes us to the next item on the agenda, which is an ordinance, number 2008-03-015, an ordinance amending Chapter 14 of the Code of Ordnances, the City of Urbana, Illinois, regarding the schedule of fees, July 1st, 2008 through June 30th, 2009. Yes, Financial Department has. Ron, do you want to speak to this?
Well, Ed Delore, go ahead and start, and I'm going to explain a little bit about the sewer benefit tax.
Okay.
Okay. Council should have received in your packets the copy of the proposed changes to the fee schedule. Fees are reviewed annually to keep pace with the cost of providing services. Since most of the service we provide is in personnel time, the cost of providing the related services is mainly driven by the increase in salaries. The estimated cost increase for fiscal year 08-09 is 4.5%. In this schedule, the changes include the annual increase of liquor licenses and sewer taxes. Other proposed adjustments include miscellaneous licenses, engineering permits, zoning, various building permits, waste management permits, animal impound fees, and a cleanup of number sequences throughout the schedule. City Code requires that the schedule of fees be reviewed by the city council and placed on file with the city clerk's office at least 30 days prior to final action by the city council. During that time, the schedule of fees is available for public inspection and comment. A notice that the schedule is available for public inspection at the city clerk's office is published in the news gazette. The only action required at this time is to place the schedule on file for public inspection and comment. The ordinance amending the schedule of fees will be placed on the May 5th, 2008 council meeting agenda. And then Ron wanted to address the increase in sewer taxes.
Yeah, sewer benefit tax. Remember three years ago when we started, we included our sewer benefit tax with the Santer district billings? We used to mail them out ourselves separately. And at that time, I did caution us that, you know, we were going to a new system, and whenever you make a change like that, we're not exactly sure the impact that's going to have. We did try to set the rate as best we could to make sure that our revenues stayed the same as they were before. It was, it was neither a revenue gain or a loser. Well, really, unfortunately, it has been a revenue loser for us, and our revenues have dropped significantly from what we thought they were and what they were before in a sewer benefit tax. Back in '05, we were getting about 797,000 some dollars from our sewer benefit tax when we were mailing it out. And if it stayed up with inflation, which is the rate increases we've done each year, we should be getting about $872,000 this last year. In reality, we only got about 815,000. So we had about $60,000 decrease in revenues from what we should have been if, if we had just stayed pace with inflation. So I'm not sure exactly why that's occurring. Something on the formula, they're maybe calculating, the way they calculate their water usage is different than the way we used to calculate it. But the result is that I think people are not paying, because we haven't had a loss in the number of citizens. So in reality, you know, per household, is paying less than they were paying before. And that, that poses a real problem on our sewer benefit tax. And our sewer benefit tax fund is really going to struggle anyway in the future because the costs of the materials that are used to maintain and repair and build sewers is going up dramatically. It's going up probably an average of 15% a year. So when we are increasing ours revenue by four to four and a half to five percent a year, we're really losing, let alone this 50,000, 60,000 drop that really we can't afford to do. So as a result of that, this year, the rate, I'm suggesting that we increase the rate 15%. It says 20% in the memo, but I did, I was able to get some more information from the Santer district this past week, do some more calculations. And I actually think that a 15% will return us to where we should be before they started mailing out with inflation, plus an additional 5.5% due to the $52,000 program that the city council approved about a month, a month and a half ago. So it would be four and a half for inflation, five and a half due to the new, two new programs, self-insured programs we talked about, and then additional 5% to catch up back to where we should be. So a total of 15%. So the rate would be, would be $2.60 instead of $2.71 that was included in your memo.
I just have one question about the budget. The only, the only, the only piece of information that I ever got from a constituent was about our budget and our fees, was a complaint about what he called the jukebox tax. All right? And my understanding would be that under miscellaneous, number four, item number D, amusement devices, is that, would the operation of a jukebox in a bar or a restaurant come under that heading?
I think it does, doesn't it?
Yes, it does.
And so...
It's, it's an amusement device tax is what, and it's so, any device that amuses you, whether it's video games, shuffleboard, jukebox, pool table, coin-operated devices.
And his comment was that in Champaign, there is not an equivalent tax. He thought it was anti-business to encourage a tax. In our town, that wasn't mirrored in Champaign. So I'm just questioning, apparently, this covers devices beyond the specific one he asked about. But I'm wondering if the city council has any comments, wants to respond to that, or not at this time. I would suggest that possibly we could reduce the jukebox tax to $40 a year instead of 80, that particular item only, that particular described item only. Is there any comments or thoughts about that? Mayor?
I would suggest that you look at the total budget before you talk about reducing revenue. I would imagine that that is not a huge amount of the budget. But, you know, if you start talking about cutting fees, you could be ready to some problems if you cut a lot of fees.
If there is more than seven jukeboxes in Urbana?
Well, you know, it's, you're singling out one thing, and everybody else would say, well, why don't you cut my fees?
Okay. All right. I'm just asking, and we're getting response and feedback. Danielle Chenoweth.
I have a little bit of a strange comment. I think the fee schedule looks great, and I do want to comment that we're talking about a 15% sewer benefit increase fee compared to 60, 60% increase in water prices and 50% in power. So I want to underline that when you own your sewers, and you're not trying to make a profit, that we're basically just trying to stay even. We raise it by 15%, and we even get, give lots of reasonable justification for that. I actually want to talk about dog impoundment. On page 19, the only reason is because when I see that we're, that we pay, we charge $15 a day for dog impoundment, and I compare that to like doggy daycare and other things like that. And then as I was looking through the budget to find some money for Public Arts, I found how much we spend on dog impoundment. And it was a lot. It was, I believe it was in the 40 to $45,000 arrangement. And it seems like dog impoundment should pay for itself. They did, they let their dog out, the dog went to the pound. It should pay for itself. We shouldn't be, so that's half, actually, of the arts programming budget that I was looking for is if we could actually just get people who let their dogs out to actually pay doggy daycare rates for the, for the impoundment, then we won't be putting money into our dog impoundment situation. And, you know, we can fund the arts, you know, less, less dogs, more art.
I, I can't explain that. There's probably some good reason and some thought process that's gone behind the $15 a day. And I, you know, I'd have to get together with the police department and animal control officer to come up with. I do know that, you know, if we raise the price so high on dog fees, that people just will not come and get their dog. And then we'll end up losing money because no one will pay the fee at all. They'll just let it, they'll just let it go.
Maybe it would be useful to, to kind of look at what, it just seems like something where we shouldn't be paying for people's delinquency. And that's what we're doing right now. So, you know, I guess the question would be, if it would, were to be a kind of zero-sum game where it just funds itself, what would that fee need to be? Because I don't know how many dogs are impounded a year. I don't know if we're talking about $5 more per dog impoundment per day, which doesn't seem unreasonable, or if we're talking about something more.
It's more than that, because there's a lot more that goes into that $45,000 than just the cost of impound, of holding the strays or someone's dog for a few days. There's a lot of other things that go into that as well. But, you know, I can provide some more information on that, and some more things to think about on that.
Yeah. Otherwise, I think it looks good.
Are there other comments? Is there a motion then? Okay, Robert Lewis? The city, city council, we're, we're in the committee here, so want to forward it to city council?
It needs to be forwarded to the May 5th.
May 5th?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, specifically? All right. Okay?
Yes.
All right. Second by Lynn Barnes. Okay, discussion? Shall we vote? Those in favor of moving it forward to the May 5th meeting, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, let's move forward. Okay, reaching number, item number eight on the agenda, an ordinance, number 2008-03-023, an ordinance banning the use of mobile electronic devices while driving in the city of Urbana, Illinois. We'll have a presentation by Charlie, and then we'll have public input, and then we'll have the city council input.
Okay, well, actually, I gave you all the material a couple weeks ago. That was essentially the presentation, right? You've got the packet of information. There've been some additional, there's been some additional information added to that. I've provided you all with web references to those materials. If you need written copy, please let me know. In the interest of time, I'd much prefer to move on to the public, and, and I do have, you know, some closing state, or closing comments as part of introducing the ordinance.
Then we'll come back to you, Mr. Smith. So we have quite a few people who are wishing to speak on this, and if you could please, since, since it's, well, we'll find out how complex your comments will be. Let's start, I'll just list the people who do not wish to come up to address the committee Let's start, I'll just list the people who do not wish to come up to address the committee but wish to make a statement supporting or not supporting this ordinance. Mike Lopet wishes to support the cellphone ban. Gloria Wilhelm, oh no, much to speak. All right. Carolyn Vaxley wishes to support the cellphone ban but not, does not wish to actually speak about it. Also Peggy Patton at 609 West Indiana is in support of the cellphone ban. Adam Davis, 1105 South Orchard is in support of the ban on cellphones. Joper Van Hallweck, if I ruined your name, I'm sorry, is in support of the cellphone ban. Neil Malone at 310 Berwash and Savoy is in opposition to adopting a ban on cellphone discretion in a car. Likewise, Max Mitchell at 3345 Ston Brook is in opposition to the cellphone ban. Max McCall is in, at 3345 Stony Brook is in opposition to the cellphone ban. And Neil Malone at 310 Berwash Savoy is in opposition to cellphone ban. Those people do not wish to come up to speak, but there are people who would like to. We have already heard from Dr. Camille, well, I'm going to do it again, Goudsin, no, it's not right. But thank you very much. And now, who, those people who wish to come up to talk about the ban proposal, please limit your time to five minutes. Gloria Wilhelm at 1047 Leoville.
Okay, I am very brief. I have concise, prepared statements, and I also have 30 research reports, which I would be happy to provide to any of you. Okay, the question is why? And the answer is because they can. The incidence of drivers using handheld, hands-free phone and texting while driving has increased dramatically and will continue to do so unless there are clear, severe deterrents. Some drivers stop dangerous behavior voluntarily when they learn of the danger through education campaigns. Others only stop when they're forced by their employers who fear litigation. Education alone is not working. We've been meeting with the distracted driving task force headed by Jesse White. This group is determined to make changes. I've been passing out his booklet to all the driver's ed classes and all the other groups that we've been talking to. Okay, and this booklet, it says inattention is a major factor in crashes. Pay attention or pay the price. Okay, so we're asking what price? On their website, driver's ed, the state of Illinois says carelessness even for a second causes more accidents than anything else. The National Safety Council statement, when a driver decides that it is safe to use a device while driving, it should be with the understanding that negligent drivers be held accountable when distracted driving results in injury or death of others. Okay, we have these 30 research reports. These are not opinions. These are the most prominent and current research available by Professor David Strayer and others, and TSA and so forth. These research objectives provide unambiguous scientific evidence demonstrating that cellphone conversations disrupt driving performance. They compare and contrast risks associated with cellphones relative to other real-world activities, which I'll briefly talk about, and the theoretical account for why cellphone disrupt performance. Innocent people are at risk, as you know. The chance of accident increases by 400%. 80% of the crashes involve some form of an intention. There's 4,300 of these crashes a day. Driving involves three functions: observation, quick decision, and reaction time. Either texting or phone use interferes with each step. This driver attention is divided, response time is delayed, or is sluggish. Drivers miss things when they're on cellphones like red light, bikes, a car stopped in front of them, or children running out in the road, and we have accidents to prove that. Often, drivers don't even get to step number two, which is the quick decision time, because they don't observe in the first place. Cellphone disrupts performance by diverting attention to cognitive functions other than driving. It's the conversation that's different. The other person on the other end is not aware of the situation changes and dangers that are present in the driving environment. This differs from the conversation in the car where the passenger can see things. Okay, report number four, David Strayer and Frank Drews, active participation in cellphone conversation disrupts performance by diverting attention to an engaging cognitive context other than the one immediately associated with driving. As you know, a lot of driving is unpredictable, like a child. Attention is diverted, driving reaction is impaired. In a car, which a lot of people compare this passenger conversation as a car, in a car, is modulated by driving difficulty. The other passenger can share the awareness and support the driving environment. Passengers can adjust their conversation based on driving hazards that they see, help the driver identify problems. The passenger conversations are jointly controlled. In the cellphone, one person has no clue what's going on. These conversations do not occur within what's called a shared situational awareness environment. This is supported by four reports that we have. When drivers talk on a cellphone, their reactions to imperative events such as braking in response to traffic lights, a stopped vehicle, pedestrians, and so forth were significantly slower. Talking about multitasking, not all multitasking activities that people try to do in cars are equal in distraction, such as listening to a radio, listening to books on tape, or even conversations with others. With cellphones, the driver is more cognitively engaged, and the action is performed over longer periods of time. There's dual task interference. The impairment is there even if it's hands-free because the interference is cognitive. Both the driver and the passenger are aware of driving conditions and can change things based on the real-time driving demands.
I'll wrapping it up.
The passenger shares awareness and supports the driving cellphone, and supports the driver. The cellphone conversation person doesn't see the same things. And due to the limited capacity of human activities, engaging in dangerous multitasking activities with cellphones comes at a cost of diverting attention away from the primary task of driving, which the National Safety Council emphasizes. Okay, research indicates that when a driver is involved in cellphone conversations, attention is withdrawn from the processing of information in the driving environment that's necessary for the safe operation of the vehicle. Even when a driver looks directly at an object, he fails to see it. And this is called inattention blindness. Cellphone conversations disrupt performance by diverting attention from the external environment associated with this driving task to engaging internal contexts associated with the cellphone conversation. I've had many people call me and tell me about specific accidents that result, that were the result of inattention blindness.
Do you want to summarize?
Comparing, pardon me?
Do you want to summarize now?
Yes. Okay, and it's been compared to DUI. We have three different reports that I would be happy to share with you. This is not our opinion, please remember this. This is for the foremost current research. People have mentioned education campaigns. Education is not enough because drivers are not aware of the limitations in human performance and attention span. And the Insurance Institute says that the latest research shows cellphone driving is by far the most prevalent cause of a crash. When we were just recently meeting with the task force with Jesse White and representatives from IDOT, it specifically said education is not enough. We have done our part with education because we have talked to quite a few groups. Testimony from the IDOT representative, the task force meeting, said education is vital, but it's not sufficient. The Click It or Ticket campaign was a successful campaign, but when the bill was passed to require seatbelt use, the compliance rate increased only due to enforcement.
Thank you very much. Other questions? Yes, Charlie Smith.
Yeah, Gloria, why, why do you think this particular ordinance banning, you know, the use of cellphones while driving is important, and how does it relate to stuff that's going on at the state level?
I think it's important because we've been working with them for the past year and a half, and they are determined to do something. I cannot say what right now because we have not had the third meeting, but the representatives from IDOT, the sheriffs, the state's attorneys, the bar association, Jesse White has promised that something will be done. We introduced the negligent vehicle homicide law to them. That's what they were specifically talking about. But they've heard testimonies from a lot of different people across the board, and they are determined to make the road safer because they, there is no way to determine exactly how many accidents are caused by cellphones because there is not required reporting. Someone from IDOT said that the reporting form that the state police have is so long and so involved that a lot of times they don't get to the part that's listed on distracted driving. And they're trying to educate the state troopers to do that more efficiently.
Thank you.
We have a question from Robert Lewis and then Danielle Chenoweth.
When do you anticipate the state will take that action to put it in the law?
There is one more meeting, and it's supposed to be within the next month or two. But they, they were specifically talking about the negligent vehicle homicide law, which increases the penalties if you kill or injure someone as a result of being on the cellphone or doing something destructive. That's what they were specifically talking about, that they have been talking about the dangers of texting and using cellphones, including hands-free.
And it, that wouldn't, would that be encompassed within the context of that law?
They're still investigating that. We have furnished them with, they were very interested in all of our 30 research reports, and they've asked all the committee members to have access to each of the reports. And so that's why the third meeting hasn't been set yet.
Okay, thanks.
And I'm sure some of the other questions will be answered by other presentations, but I'm very happy to provide any other information that you'd like to have.
And Danielle, you have a question?
Just, is there a law before either the Senate or House on the state level to ban cellphone use while driving?
Not right now, there is not.
Okay.
But it would not surprise me at all. They are bound and determined to do something, but right now there is not. They're introducing something for the negligent vehicle homicide law, which is after the fact.
I have a question for you too before you go. You said that there were 4,300 negligent crashes a day, but you just also indicated that people are not, the police are not actually recording the causes of the crashes. So therefore, the negligence could be amount to, be caused by many different things, is that correct? These are not all cellphone-related crashes you're talking about?
No, that is specifically, that is on the back of the distracted driving brochure, that there's...
Like it could be spilled coffee or some such.
...driving distraction and then a ton of driving. But they do say that the number one driving distraction are cellphones.
Okay, okay, thank you. Yes, and Mayor Pressing.
Okay, you're talking about the committee, is that a legislative committee?
It is a committee that was a result of what we started at the state legislature, and it was introduced by Representative Black and Senator Ferrerix. And it was a task force headed by Jesse White, and it's with the state's attorney, the bar associates, and the sheriffs, IDOT, and the state police.
Okay.
It's made up of about 14 people, and they've been meeting different times, and we've been testifying for them.
Thank you.
And they're all very interested in this issue, extremely interested, and they know that something needs to be done.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
And I would hope that Urbana would be at the forefront of trying to do something because a lot of other states and municipalities are looking at it currently.
Okay, then, other questions? Thank you very much, Gloria.
Thank you for your time.
All right, also wishing to speak, Danielle Lewitt. And following his, Carol Lichtensteiner.
Actually, Carol regrets that she'll be unable to speak because she has to pick up some foster kids, however, she's totally in support...
Thank you.
...of this ordinance. My name is Danielle Lewitt. I live at 310 North PC Avenue in Urbana. I'd like to thank you all for letting me speak. I'll be brief. By the way, for those of you keeping score of the positive and negative cards, I believe four of the negatives were actually two people doing it twice. Perhaps they were distracted while filling out their cards. So what I find is every day when I'm driving, I notice people driving erratically, rolling through stop signs, weaving left and right through lanes, and I wonder, are these people drunk? But then, when I get closer, I see almost universally they're on cellphones. And studies, which are already mentioned, show that, including ones done here at Illinois, show it doesn't matter whether you're hands-free or not, that it's, it's equivalent to, it is equivalent to being drunk. And to me, the issue's very simple. It's the rights of cellphone users to talk on the phone and endanger others versus the safety of pedestrians, cyclists, and other motor vehicles. And to me, of course, safety is paramount, and no one should have to go through what Chuck and Gloria Wilhelm are, have been going through. And I urge you to vote for this ordinance. Also, I think it's important to, you're probably familiar with another issue I'm involved with, where before the state would act, we, we had a bunch of cities pass ordinances, and then to the state, it was clear that this is what the people wanted. Perhaps the state will act first, but I think it's no, no harm for the city to take action. So, thank you.
Oh, question.
Yes? Dan? I hear about drivers with cellphones and the accidents that occur when a driver's distracted with using a cellphone. I'd like to see numbers that report about a student on campus texting their friends while they're walking across in front of me while I'm not on my cellphone, and they are texting and walking right in front of me because they're distracted. So what I want to, what I want to see is numbers that also show the pedestrians and the bicyclists that are distracted by their cellphones because of texting.
Well, there's also a matter of physics, that cars and pedestrians are not equal, that it seems the burden should be a bit with the cars, with the drivers. They're operating a deadly weapon.
I, I understand that, but my point is, is that if I'm not on a cellphone and someone walks right out in front of me and they are texting, how, I, I don't understand how you can equate the fact that I, I wasn't distracted, but because they were distracted, it's somehow my fault that they walk right in front of me.
I'm not saying it's your fault.
Well, that's what I'm asking, that, I'd like to see the numbers because I believe that there's probably many instances where there's kids, and I've had it happen when I go have lunch with my husband who works on Campus Town, and I've seen the students from uni high walking, texting, and they're walking right in front of me, and I'm not on my cellphone.
Well, maybe some of that information can come forward in further discussion.
Yeah, I can't speak to those numbers, but I appreciate you're not on the cellphone and, and not running these kids down.
Thank you, Danielle.
Thank you.
And I guess that we've learned that Carol Lichtensteiger has left. Next wishing to speak would be Susan Jepson, followed by Bruce Kruger.
Hi, my name's Susan Jepson, and I'm with Reynolds Towing Service. My brother has been running Reynolds Towing Service, and I worked with him since 1980. Since 1980, we have run the business with some type of mobile device. It used to be the old-fashioned big radios. Now we use the Nextel radios, which also are cellphones, but have the two-way, and that's how we dispatch our calls or we receive information. A lot of our calls are run for MetCAD or the police department. We have a 20-minute response time for those calls. So it's important to use the radios to get the drivers dispatched to the areas they need to be as soon as they can. And a lot of times, the initial information that comes into MetCAD needs to be tweaked via dress or the information, so we're constantly in connection by these radios with our drivers. To not be able to use the radios would definitely impact the business, and it would only not impact our business because we're not officially in emergency response, but it would be fire, and ambulance, and towing, and police. And I think the way the ordinance, as I had seen it or initially understood it, is not very specific as to how these types of businesses would be able to use their radios or their cellphones to run the business. The other thing is, to pull off the side of the road and stop and get the information back on the road and stop off the side of the road and back on the road, that's more dangerous than just being able to connect and do the information necessary to get the business conducted. And I'm sure that's not just for the towing business, that's for plumbers and, I mean, there's hundreds of different businesses in Champaign-Urbana that run off the two-way radios, which are mobile devices. And I'm sure they use them as cellphones, but we primarily use them as a two-way radio by pushing a little button that makes it connect. Being in the towing business, I also see many vehicles that come in for different types of accidents. I would say that more of them are... I would say that more of them are from eating and driving or spilling something, or now the GPS, they're so computerized in the dashboard that you're trying to figure out what you're doing on your dashboard. Or the temporary GPS that you can put anywhere on your dashboard, but if you put it too far to reach. I mean, there's so many different kids screaming, we've had all kinds of rollovers from kids screaming in the backseat where parents get distracted. So to be able to say it's just the cellphone that causes all the different accidents that we see at Reynolds Towing, that would probably be few, or it's not, I mean, it's not a high rate of the calls that we have for accidents, it's not just from cellphone usage. But as far as impacting our business, with the fuel prices the way they are, to have to stop and start and to have to not be able to use these devices to run business or to not be able to assist the police department in the way we need to and the time we need to do it, would definitely impact the economy of our business and probably taxicabs. I think MTD probably runs by mobile devices, the ambulance services, there's a lot of businesses out there that use mobile devices to run their businesses. That would impact the economy of the businesses being done. Thank you.
Anybody have questions? Yes, Charlie?
Real quickly, one of the issues that, in trying to craft this, was dealing with the whole aspect of two-way radio stuff and dispatch and so on. Could you just real quickly show me how, you know, that would sort of be used? You pick up the phone and, you know, the dispatcher picks it up and
Yeah, I can, you just find, just push in the button and talk.
You just push and talk, there's no dialing involved, no, yeah, it's just like a CB or picking up.
Walkie-talkie.
Yeah, yeah. I'm sympathetic to that and I'd, hopefully, you know, in talking with staff and stuff, we can figure out exactly how to tweak the ordinance so that, you know, the way I look at it, and the MTD raised the same issue here, and I said, I don't expect this ordinance to cover their dispatching and guidance that's provided by these two-way interactions.
Okay. And it didn't seem that that was clear, so that's why I wondered.
Yeah, no, it's not, and I agree, and we need to make it a little clearer. I agree.
Yes, Len Barnes?
If we altered the ordinance to incorporate the two-way radio, does that meet the needs of businesses that you know of like that? Or are there some businesses that rely on cellphones, the more traditional cellphone?
I think it, I don't really know, like, to speak for taxicabs.
But most towing companies, because there's several towing companies in town.
I would say most towing companies in town.
And taxis and
That, I mean, I think it depends on the package you're able to get. For us, the convenience of the two-way is definitely faster, so we do use the two-way. For taxicabs, I don't know how often they have to dispatch, so it probably would depend on the economy of, if the cellphone package is cheaper than the two-way package.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Robert Lewis?
Well, there's a number of areas where the mobile devices are utilized, for example, and I hate to say this, but the water company, emergency devices
Right.
to get to a water break
Power company.
The power company
Power company.
Emergency gas, shut-offs, those kinds of things. And we need to take a hard look at a lot of these emergency situations throughout our community so that we can understand that helicopters, for example, bicycles.
Other comments for Susan Jepson?
Yeah, I think the big issue here is that it's a very quick interaction, right? With a push-button sort of aspect, it is the old two-way radio thing. And, you know, we dispatch our public works people with basically a two-way radio still. So, you know, it wasn't my intention to include that aspect if we can figure out a way to work that in. I'm curious also, another thing we should ask is how the U of I is dealing with that because, you know, the way this is drafted is very similar to the U of I, and so I'm curious how they're dispatching their folks and so on.
Okay. We'll have that discussion in council here. Okay, the next person who would like to speak? Yes, thank you. Bruce Kruger?
Yeah, can I defer to the latter?
You don't want to speak?
No.
Okay. David Eisenman?
Yes, thank you. I do appreciate your willingness to listen to the public. I don't live in Urbana, but I drive in Urbana. I have great sympathy for almost everybody I've listened to tonight because everybody's brought up something that I think the council needs to think about. I'm very much in favor of doing something about distracted drivers and especially cellphone drivers. I don't have to tell you my experiences because I published them some months ago in the News Gazette. They were extensive. People driving the wrong way, on one-way streets, people going through stop signs, outrageous behavior. And in every instance, the person driving badly had a cellphone. I acknowledge there are other kinds of distraction, but I think you do have a problem, I think it needs to be addressed with. But I am a physicist and one thing I learned in problem solving is you work back from the hoped-for solution. Now, David Pines, a physicist, gave me a story some years ago that may be very helpful. He was in Denmark, he was attending a party, he had to drink, glass of wine. An hour went by, he was ready to go home. And somebody said, "By the way, how are you getting home?" He said, "I'm gonna drive." And they said, "No, you're not. In Denmark, we have a zero tolerance for blood alcohol." He said, "I'm not drunk, I had one glass of wine, it was an hour ago, you're crazy." They said, "Look, we love to drink, but we also don't want to be killed by drivers. So we've arrived at an understanding that we have a zero tolerance for alcohol. So we'll get you home. There are people here, take you home, we've got mass transit, we'll get you home." David thought it was crazy, but then he thought about it. The best laws are laws that actually let us all do what we really wanted to do, but we didn't do it because the other guy wasn't doing it. Now, all of us have seen crazy people driving with cellphones. I think we'd all give it up if the other guy would give it up. Your problem is how to get there from where we are. And your big problem was captured beautifully by the reluctant townie in last Saturday's News Gazette. He tells us that he drives all the time and he's on the phone and he is a safe driver. That is also the perception of half the doctors in this town, most of the lawyers in this town, I suspect newspaper writers and editors, they all think that they can drive safely. And you know what? Some of them may be able to drive safely. And Ms. Stevenson brought up another point, it isn't just the drivers. I drive on campus and I have had students walk right out in front of me, right out in front. So no matter how carefully you're driving, distracted people in streets is the problem. And it has to be defined that way. Not how they're in the street, and yes, cars have more lethal power than a person walking, but frankly, a person walking right between two cars directly in front of me, I'm 65, I don't have the reflexes of an 18-year-old, even if I'm paying perfect attention. So, I want you to think seriously about paying attention to the second thing that Gloria Wilhelm said to you, which was that drivers have to know when they pick up a device that is known to distract people, that if they now do something stupid while driving, they have to take responsibility for it. Work back from the people who actually have the accidents. I know that's little comfort to the people who got hit by those people, but for a while, to build data, let's start showing the people who think that they can drive safely on the phone that actually they can't. And the way to do that is to collect the data. Before you even write an ordinance, every policeman who investigates every accident in this town should be asking the question, A, do you own a cellphone? B, and what is its number? And B, were you on it? And then we should look and see if they were on it. Now, this way, please notice, you don't have to distinguish between two-way radios and cellphones. If in fact, a towing operator was in fact having an argument with his girlfriend on his cellphone and not using it for business, and it wasn't a one-second interaction, it was a half-hour conversation, and then he runs into somebody, he was distracted and he was on the phone, and as far as I'm concerned, we might have him a big fat fine. I wouldn't make categorical exemptions for anybody. The goal is to have people driving safely and undistracted. If everybody knows that's the goal, I think we'll be able to get to the point where we'll have a mutual agreement, a very general agreement, that we just shouldn't be on the phone when we're in the street. I think you'll see people say, "I'm about to cross the street, Mom, hold on," when they're walking. And put the phone down and look left and right before they cross. And I think you'll see drivers getting in the habit of in fact pulling over. You don't have to answer the phone instantly when it rings, you probably will have a chance at a stop sign to answer the phone. And by the way, if you can, if it's a real fast interaction, why should we ban that? I'd like you to think about enforceability. What are your police gonna do tomorrow? On my way over here tonight, I saw 20% of the people that I went past, that I could see what they were doing, were on the phone. We can't begin arresting everybody who's on the phone. But you can certainly throw a big fine at somebody who's on the phone and does a dumb thing, like go around a corner without his turn signal on, or goes through a red light or something of that sort. So I suggest to you that as step number one, start collecting data from every accident about whether anybody involved in the accident owns a phone. They might not admit to being on it, but you can get the records. And at least you can do a sampling, do some data, collect some data, find some things out. But everybody will be on notice to drive more carefully because if they are in an accident and they were on a phone, you're gonna hit them. You pick the number, $500, $1,000, I think it should be high.
Any questions for David?
I guess just so in summary, in a nutshell, you're suggesting that we alter the consequences rather than make an ordinance changing the initial behavior.
But announce to everybody that you think, probably the right goal is that we all shouldn't be on the phone while driving. But maybe we'll get there when everybody's convinced. I'm just trying to say to you, look out there for folks, there's an awful lot of people who think that they're safe on the phone and they're going to disobey this rule. And then you're gonna have the police arresting people with perfect driving records because they saw them on the phone. Or the police are not gonna want to arrest anybody and I think really start focusing on the people who aren't using the turn signals, sliding through the red lights. Give the police another reason to pull bad drivers over to wit, not only are they driving badly, but they're on the phone. And you have an automatic $250 fine or $500 or $1,000. This is a nice wedge in the door, it'll build you data a year from now. I think maybe the public will be ready for an overall ban. I don't think they're ready for it right now. But doing nothing is the worst thing because our young people keep saying, well gee, we hear all this talk about cellphone distraction, but nothing has happened. It must be okay. Because if it weren't okay, they would've done something by now. And I'm shocked that we've gone this long doing nothing. That's the worst position.
Thank you very much. Yes, Charlie?
David, are you aware that the state doesn't allow 18 and under to use a cellphone while driving?
I think that's great. They also don't let
I mean, there are some things that have been
Oh, yeah.
School bus drivers aren't allowed to use
That's true. And that's very good. By the way, I've been seeing 18 years old and under using the cellphones, again, it's not enforced. It needs to start being enforced. I mean, some of the kids that I have gotten out of my car and chatted with, at risk to my life, as somebody pointed out to me, were definitely not over 18. They also had the wrong number of people in the car. But yes, I think that's a step in the right direction and everybody's for it. By the way, should ban it on people over 65. I can tell you that I can't multitask the way I did, I turned 65 last week. I cannot multitask the way I did at 48. I shouldn't be allowed to have a cellphone in my car, not that I would anyway.
Are you still able to drive?
Barely. I got here tonight, thank God.
Where'd you park?
Across the street. I didn't, I'm in the parking lot across the street. I walked.
Thank you, David. Your inputs are interesting. And the last person who's asked to speak would be Audrey Ishi. Ishi.
I live at 805 South Caller in Urbana, wife of Charlie, I'm sure you're aware. I'd like to address some of the objections that I've heard or read regarding the passage of this and implementation of this ordinance. One thing everyone knows is there've been many, many studies, many studies documenting the impairment and the increased crash risk of cellphone driving. But there's little data available on the effect of a cellphone ban. Studies that have actually, the only way you can actually collect data would be to have the cellphone records. The studies that have used cellphone records have had to been held in Australia, Canada, even when paid for by American research companies like the Insurance Institute for Highway Safety, because the US cellphone companies will not release the records even with the driver permission. I think it would be nice if we could get the records and collect the data. There's no problem on earth in which you, there's no issue that you can't say it's true that you need more data. But I think that we don't have, so therefore, we really don't have proof at this moment, but we do have evidence. We have lots of evidence. The problem is that in Champaign, Urbana, right now, we have one car pedestrian crash a week. When you're talking about data in Champaign, Urbana, we're really talking about human bodies here. If we have to wait for the data, I would actually prefer that the data not be the numbers of the disabled and dead in this town. You know, when you have an experiment, you have to have the control and you have to have the treatment. Let's let Urbana be the treatment, the place that has a cellphone driving ban and a real one. The other problem with collecting data is of course that no municipality, no jurisdiction that we know of in the US actually has a true cellphone ban. They have handheld bans. So, you know, with all the research that shows and that the young professor mentioned earlier, that shows that there's no real difference in impairment, we can't expect to see a big difference necessarily in the crash risk. Some have pointed out there's many forms of distracted driving and we can't ban them all, so why should we pick on this one? It's similar to suggesting there's many diseases, we can't cure them all, so why should we try to cure any? We can't let perfection be the enemy of progress here. The fact is, is that cellphone usage is the number one distraction. The type of study that they've had to do, again, is observational studies. The NHTSA did a study where 241 drivers in 100 cars agreed to be videotaped for an entire year, doing whatever it is they do. And they found from that study that the crash rate was four times higher while you were on a cellphone. So they also found that the most common distraction was cellphone usage, much more than, you know, makeup or newspapers or all the other things that people will mention. Surprisingly, people were driving actually very, very naturally. At this present time, it's estimated that one out of 10 drivers at any time on the road is on a cellphone, and I think most of you agree that that's probably not unlikely. The other problem with this argument is that it's omitting to notice that other distractions are just distractions. Momentary things, food, makeup and so on like this, they're located in the car, the cellphone is an actual impairment, it's much more than a distraction, it's taking that driver out of that car environment. Let's face it, we all have to be distracted drivers at some point, but none of us has to be deliberately impaired while we're driving. Third, many state that cellphone bans are unenforceable. There's many laws that are difficult to enforce, yet we have them on the books because they're the right thing to do. One of them would be gun laws, which by their very nature are difficult to enforce. They take only a few victims a year, yet we have laws for their control and consequences for their use. The first step to acknowledge that deliberate decisions that you make while you're sober, not just drunk-driving laws, which were becoming ever clearly more unacceptable to drive drunk, but also deliberate decisions made while sober can be subject to the judgment of the community. But the first step is to make sure that it's understood that that decision is totally and completely unacceptable. And that's what an actual ordinance will do. Third, I've heard people state that because they're able to use cellphones responsibly and they're able to talk and drive safely, it would be very hypocritical to ban the activity. First of all, I don't doubt that many of us are very talented multitaskers. Some people can drive safely at .08 alcohol. Don't forget that the level used to be .1. However, the fact that some people are better than average in no way invalidates the research that shows that average people are going to be impaired while they're on a cellphone. This has been shown statistically in the study that people can't divide their attention effectively, especially in a fast-moving environment, including research at the University of Illinois, which I think you're probably aware of. I myself have chatted while driving on a cellphone, but of course, I knew that there was a risk. And I know that the chance that I would ever take that risk becomes greatly reduced if I know that my community has notified me this is a risk that's unacceptable. Finally, I've heard that some people can say that we can wait till the federal government or the state will protect us. If cellphones were so bad, wouldn't accidents be going up? One thing to recognize is the improvements in vehicle safety over the last 15 years have protected drivers and their passengers, but the accident shift has been going towards pedestrians, motorcyclists and bicyclists, people who are outside the vehicle. In fact, because the rate of deaths though, of fatal accidents, has actually been declining. However, it would have started right, the only reason for the decline has been the increased protection by modern vehicle designs. And if it wasn't for those designs, again, the Insurance Institute for Highway Safety did a study that found if it wasn't for those designs, the rate of fatal accidents would have started rising in 1994 steadily. And right now, we would be seeing 5,200 more deaths. Well, you say, "That's great, you know, the fatal accident rates gone down." That's 5,200 fewer people that could be dead right now if our driving skills had only stayed steady since 1994. Instead, they've been declining and we've been counting on our armored vehicles to be protecting us. The number of 42,000, 43,000 dead a year is not a number that was designed by the gods as the sacrifice from American drivers for our way of life. There's no reason we couldn't have 38,000 dead a year and going down and down and down with the kind of technology and improvements that we can make. It's time for us to really It's time for us to really end this road warrior mentality that drivers just don't really have responsibility for others on the road, as long as they're safely cocooned in their super-safe, state-of-the-art vehicle. I think the best way to counter that attitude is to really draw a thoughtful limit on the use of technology that's dividing and altering the attention of that driver, and giving him the idea that, hey, driving's something I can do with one eye, one hand, one ear. It doesn't take all of me. It takes whatever I can afford to provide, because I'm protecting my vehicle. And finally, in closing, I'd like to say that you, the City Council of Urbana, are, you're at the level of where it's at. You're blessedly free from the high-powered lobbies of the AAA, of the wireless telecommunications industry. There's changes that are going to have to get to Springfield and to Washington from the local community, from the grassroots level up. And these are the kind of things that are impacting you locally, that are impacting your friends, and your family, and yourself, your neighbors. You're responsible for the laws and ordinances of Urbana, and you can make a difference that doesn't even require capital cost, capital improvements, and structural changes. Instead of looking at the money we can spend, we can really look at the parameters of performance that we're going to declare are acceptable. We can be really proud and grateful that we live in Illinois. Not all states allow communities to do this type of legislation. And we can be really proud that we live in Illinois where we can take this step. So I'm really asking you guys to exercise your right to act on the petitions of almost 600 of your Urbana friends and neighbors that we have at this time, but of course, we could get many more, to make these streets prouder and safer and a real city asset. Thank you.
Thank you, Audrey. Stay for a minute for questions. Other questions?
Yeah, I think Audrey sent me a study earlier today, I didn't get a chance to look at it, that answers Laurel's question about Japan. You said there was-
Oh, well, Japan has, I mean, again, I don't know the long term at all. I assume the study's done in Japanese, which I don't read. It was reported in the New York Times in 2002 that Japan saw a 75% drop in cellphone-caused crashes. Now, I'm assuming they're reporting cellphone crashes in the first place, if they could see a 75% drop. They probably have different compliance standards and reporting standards, so I, you know, I just couldn't say a lot about it, except they did see a drop immediately after the ban went into effect, but long-term, I don't know. I mean, Japan, of course, it's long in a crowded country and has a culture that's used to maybe giving up a little bit of, you know, the personal freedom for the good of the community.
So let me ask you that. I don't understand the Japanese new law. So they have a complete ban on cellphone use in cars?
I don't, I believe it's handheld-
Handheld.
-in cars. I believe it's handheld.
I've got one more question for you.
There are very, very few places, if you look in your packet, that actually have a total ban. I think there's a couple, and they probably don't have the statistics that we could use.
You know, you mentioned, this is a question that I've been thinking about, maybe you can comment on it or not. I do believe in personal responsibility. I think that ultimately, everybody is responsible for the actions, whether it's thoughtless or thoughtful. Many people are able to drive for years, or months, or whatever, multitasking. And we, you know, we see, I mean, just coming from my job at work, I'm near Neal Street to Urbana, I passed, I don't know, 18 people on cellphones. It was during, you know, rush hour, you could call it. Three people just between Neal Street and First Street I passed, and coming in the other lane were on cellphones. One person was drinking, something in her cup, and making a left-hand turn. Then, between Fourth Street and Lincoln, seven more people I passed were on cellphones. And by the time I got to Race Street in Urbana, I had passed 12 people. Also, I had passed somebody who looked like they were putting on lip gloss, and two other people who were drinking or eating food. So I arrived in Urbana, safe and sound, but was it chance, are people being, in other words, when does personal responsibility become the keynote for a civic ban? Because you have, you have, I mean, basically, any limitation that we cause in life is, you know, you could say, a question of personal freedom. If a person's being responsible, even though they're juggling tomatoes in the front seat of their car, I guess I'd really like to have a comment on, when is it time that all of us have to be responsible for the four people or five people a week who aren't responsible themselves? I think this is a real important question to ask.
Well, I think it's really important to realize that the privilege of driving a two-ton vehicle, of being in charge of, you know, this death-dealing device, comes with a huge responsibility that actually entails a loss of personal freedom. I mean, you don't get in your car, I mean, you don't exercise any number of freedoms that you think you can exercise when you're at home, when you're walking even, wearing headphones. I saw that, you know, a certain individual had a prominent column last week, his one ticket was for wearing headphones while driving, you know? And this is something that, while you're walking, yes, you are definitely endangering yourself, but you're not endangering others in the community around you the same way. Giving up a technology that the penetration has only started really becoming universal in the very last few years, doesn't have to be that difficult. Tons of corporations have already had to do it with tens of thousands of employees each. The U of I did it. What we're saying is, driving is a very important task that requires all the attention you can muster. Now, there are certain types of distractions that amazingly enough are helpful, but haven't been any studies that found cellphone use was a helpful distraction. It's an impairment. And that's the huge difference. Playing a radio is actually associated in some studies with lower levels of crash. I mean, even adjusting the radio, people are, but, you know, why? Because it's a correlation. Because, not because it saves you somehow to do this, but because you do it when it's safe to do it. Cellphones, some people probably can shift their attention, but honestly, the research clearly shows us that most cannot really do that reliably and safely. I think it's really astonishing that we've come to this culture where we think cars are more important than any other human right, including the right to life. I mean, to me, it's just an American value, don't tread on me, you know? And that means when you're in that vehicle, you've got a sacred trust to drive safely. And, you know, we have this, I think some of you saw this letter that I also was CC'd on, that we teach our children to make eye contact with the driver to make sure that they see them. Try making eye contact with someone on a cellphone. I mean, this is not the kind of community that we want, where people are encased in their super-safe armored, you know, latest-of-the-art, and they're engrossed in their world, which is miles and miles away from you. I mean, you know how annoying it is when you're in a store or something, or when you're even just at an office, and they say, oh, sorry, we don't care about you, this phone is much more important? Well, that's what's happening in our streets. You know, that's what people are seeing in our streets, that they don't care. The fact that I'm an unprotected walk pedestrian, runner mostly around here, you know, is not what's mattering to them. What's mattering to them is this phone conversation happening somewhere else, or they're conducting their business with their clients. That's what's important to them, not that I'm right in front of them.
Okay. Thank you. Actually, okay, does anybody have a comment or more questions? Okay, we're going to open it up for discussion here on the City Council.
Thank you.
I, maybe, can I, oh, yeah, we have one more, that's right. We do have one more. Thank you. Mike Lopez, Lopez.
I'm sorry, my handwriting.
No, it's a Z with a cross in it, and I can see that.
I did mention that earlier, I wasn't interested in speaking, but hopefully, I have made an observation that I hope can be a quick win for the group. I have written a letter, you should have received it in email today, so more of my opinion can be found in that letter. And no worries, my limp tonight has not been earned by a reckless driver. In fact, it was earned with children of the community playing soccer. The comment or observation that I've noted, it appears that there's going to be quite a bit of discussion on the topic, and across the United States, there may be quite a bit of discussion on the topic. But my quick-win observation hopefully could be, within this particular community, I know there's quite a bit of funding that was recently awarded for creating safer biking and walking for the children to school. I also know that in this community, many of the schools are marked as drug-free zones. I question whether a quick win for the council could be to also make the drug-free zone a cell-free zone. And therefore, not necessarily mandated across the entire community, but just mandated in the small zones around the schools where the children are prevalent, as a quick win to make that a safer region for the children, and hopefully, have far less debate on those particular zones, and the award or benefit to the community for that particular thing.
Thank you, that was a very interesting comment. Any questions for Mike?
Thank you.
I'm going to make an observation. Go ahead, Mike, you can leave. I'm just going to make an observation myself now. It's always interesting when you have people come up in the community and you have public input, because you actually get really interesting ideas. And, I mean, that's an interesting input. And we also had some others from David Isonman. And actually, while Audrey was talking about eye contact, I was thinking, something occurred to me, that one, one of the topics that we've discussed is how to educate bad drivers. What if the city promoted a plan, and it wasn't a ban, but that anytime you saw somebody talking on the cellphone in a car, motorists nearby honk their horns? As an, it's an illegal thing to honk your horn?
I can give testimony on that one.
Okay, all right. I was just saying that that would be instant feedback for those people, and we don't have eye contact, but we do have audio contact.
I really have to tell you that I've done research. I have knocked on the windows of people who did bonehead things while on the phone, and they act like a mother bear who has had the cub taken away.
While you're entering their space.
Yes. And if you think you're not going to have road rage, I mean, these people are so wedded to that conversation. If they've done a dumb thing, and then you call them on it, they want to deny that they were even there. I was nearly beaten up by a top official at the university. I've seen a guy who ran right in front of me through a red light, give me the finger and scream at me when I said, do you think maybe you ought to hang up? So I think admonishing the sinner is going to get you right into the grave.
All right, all right. Now we have another viewpoint on that topic.
Never mind.
Thank you, thank you. All right, Kate, comments and discussion?
Yes. Brad?
I don't know what the will of the council is, where you all are at. I would just say that, try to point out some things with this ordinance and then make a request. I also want to offer, I won't do it in this form, but if any of you all would like to discuss privately with me, my experience as a former prosecutor. I've prosecuted thousands of traffic violations in the state of Illinois. So I have perhaps a different perspective than what you've read or heard, so I would be happy to talk to you all about that. The concerns that I have are language and how this is presented, and I would like an opportunity, if it's the council's will, to take a shot at drafting something different. I think I can get a kind of an idea as to where you're trying to go, if you do indeed want to do this. And I have some, maybe some ideas for addressing some of the concerns, Charlie, that you had mentioned earlier. You know, the questions that I have have to do with, what is a mobile electronic device? You know, does that include CVs? Some people still have those, by the way. You know, the owner of the towing business, you know, are we, I've now gotten my answer, which is that you did not intend to include maybe some of the people that were mentioned there. So my concern is about the impact on truck drivers, delivery people, taxis, you know, other vehicles. And when is a vehicle in an emergency situation? Is it only going to the emergency? Or is it also the return, where there may need to be follow-up conversation regarding, like, in other words, the imminent emergency has passed, but now there's still communication that needs to be taken, that needs to take place? Paging devices, are you using it when it goes off, or when you look at it, or when you're doing something with it? Laptop computers, sometimes those are used as GPS devices. I've seen people using their laptop as a GPS, but then we specifically have exempted GPS devices. There are GPS devices that you can run your telephone through, your cellphone through, via Bluetooth. So if you're using a GPS device, is that using the mobile electronic device within the meaning of this?
You can't simultaneously use your cellphone and use it as a GPS.
Yeah, you can.
Really?
You can actually run your cellphone, so you're essentially using the GPS as a speakerphone.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I took that the wrong way, yeah. There are cellphones that actually can-
Oh, no, 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 I'm talking about an actual GPS device in your car, like the ones mounted on the window, or in your car. You can run your phone through them actually as a, in real time, as you're talking on those.
I think that would qualify as hands-free.
Hands-free, okay.
But how would that be distinguished by an officer passing, without really understanding completely how you're rigged up inside your car?
The, there's that issue as well. The other concern that I have is, on the reverse side in the ordinance, and that would be subsection 1 of 23-302, when it says that when no other means of communication are available, and I'm thinking that you might run afoul there, I'm not sure what that means in terms of, does that mean that officers, or emergency personnel, or truck drivers, or whoever, have to have no other opportunity or means?
Yeah, well, I think it's, you know, I got a message today from somebody who was complaining about a City of Urbana police officer, basically driving down the road, clearly having a personal conversation on a cellphone. Okay? They've got radios and other devices that are attached to them. Those should be, you know, they're in contact with MetCat and so on. You know, when they pick up the phone, when they pick up their personal cellphones, okay, is it, it should be strictly for business, because they, you know, they have, need to have direct contact with their supervisor, or their supervisor's having direct contact with them about a particular issue. They shouldn't be having a personal conversation with somebody, or dealing with personal business while driving down the road. I think that's the distinction here.
Okay. That clarifies some of it for me, and I guess I would just say, after your discussion, if you, if it is your will, I would like an opportunity to maybe draft something differently with, after consulting with, you know, the emergency police and fire, and some of our department heads, to determine what exemptions, if any, should be carved out, and be able to come back maybe with some more information.
Yes, Mayor?
Well, I agree with Heather that there should be something about pedestrians crossing the street using a cellphone, and also bicyclists. Because we're just talking about people in the street that could get hit, or hit other people.
In terms of bicyclists, I would point out that all you have to do is change the word to moving vehicle, and then they fall into the same categories that they presently do. You know, and so typically, a bicycle on the street is a moving vehicle by state statute and has to follow all the regular provisions. So, I mean, if that's something people are interested, that would include all the bicyclists using cellphones. My problem, of course, is with pedestrians. They put themselves at risk. I know New York City and a couple other places have looked at trying to deal with that. I think, you know, that's a, that's a second piece of this. I'm not sure, you know, cellphones being used by people in vehicles, you know, weigh two, three, four tons, whatever they weigh, is a lot different from a pedestrian that is stepping out, you know? If they're not paying attention, they're not paying attention. And so, you know, I'm not sure that you can lump all of this together. I want to get started with something. I'm not sure if we add all of these components in there, try to make it- I'm not sure if we, if we add all of these components in there, try to make it perfect, we'll never get anywhere. Okay, Lynn?
I'm supportive of getting started with something. I wonder if, I am concerned about the businesses. The representation from Reynolds Tonight is a good example, of course, police, ambulance, fire, and, and you're right, there's those nuances about only on the way to the emergency or, you know, because there's a lot of business that takes place with regard to calls. And then trucking, you mentioned trucking, and that was an interesting one I hadn't thought of. Would it be, would it be possible to get a quick win, as someone mentioned, by having a device banned, but not a hands-free ban? And, and, and get a quick win? And apparently, the Japan study that was very quickly referenced, this is, this ban's hands-free, too?
Of wanting to ban hands-free?
No. I mean, I'm just suggesting, I'm just discussing at this point, but not to ban hands-free. Because apparently, the Japan study that Audrey very briefly talked about, they did get a improvement in the reduction of accidents just with eliminating the use of the device. So that was encouraging to hear. Just comment.
Okay, Mayor Pressing.
I think we should look at that, because my understanding is the research says that there's no difference between hand-free and handheld. And I, I just think that if you, responding to Charlie, that if you say bicyclists, that's more clear to the average person. And I think a lot of this is to get the discussion going and change people's behavior, because you're not gonna be able to arrest everybody, or that's not your intention. Your intention is to educate people and change the way they do things. And I think having a penalty if you're in an accident, as the gentleman suggested, is a good idea.
Dana. Okay, what comments? Well, let's have Ron.
I just wanna address something that we said about the hands-free versus total ban. It would be my office that would be prosecuting these ordinance violations, and I just wanna point out the practical implications of a total ban, which is proofs. An officer can ask, but someone who's in an accident doesn't have to say anything. They don't have to tell you anything, they don't have to show you their cellphone, they don't have to give you anything. So you can speculate as to whether or not it was a phone that actually called it, caused the accident. But unless I can bring, I or my colleague Kirk can bring someone into court who can testify definitively that they were actually using the phone, not that it was in their hand, not that it was turned on, but that they were using it, it makes it difficult. Chicago, which has a hands-free exception, part of that, I think, is a practical matter, because if you have the handset up to your ear and someone sees you, that's, you know, a rebuttable presumption that you were using it. Versus trying to prosecute someone who was doing it hands-free. And now, how do I prove that? How do I, as your city attorney, go to court and prove that someone was talking on the phone? Hands-free.
Okay, Robert Lewis, and then Brandon.
Is there any way to address that issue with regard to the use, when you, you will have a record if they can seize the phone? Can you do that?
You're talking about an ordinance violation, so maybe you might get a little bit hairier when you're talking about seizing someone's property at the scene. I don't know, I'd have to honest, to be honest with you, though, my quick answer is I'd have to research that, whether or not I don't-
If it's fundamental to the cause, then obviously, there's some reason to say that that's part of the evidence?
It, maybe, but there, you know, right off the top of my head, I'm thinking that, for example, people have, at least on the higher end cars, have their phone system wired into the car.
I know.
If you get a Beamer or a Benz, you know, you can have your phone system, all you do is hit button. Sometimes you don't even have to do that, you can just speak, call so-and-so.
I understand.
And it'll come on, and so, what would we seize? The car?
Yes.
Or have the system? I don't know about that one.
Okay, Brandon Barsocks?
Yeah, I think it's clear this cellphone driving is a dangerous behavior, and I think we have a lot of more figuring to do here to see what can be done to effectively reduce the behavior and what public policy response is appropriate. To me, actually, my biggest set of questions are for Chief Beely, and I wonder if he is willing to briefly sort of enter this conversation with us, and, you know, some of these things I'll ask, you might not have an answer for tonight, and we can go back and work on it more, because we wanna get this right and figure it out. My, I'll tell you sort of my two categories of questions, and let you decide what you can answer tonight and what we talk about later. The first is, if you could describe what we're currently doing with the 18 and under law, and how that affects your officers, how you enforce it, or how you educate to people that, that 18 and under can't be using a cellphone. Do you pull a lot of people over for that, or do we give a lot of tickets to you now? And then the second category of questions is, what would you do if we were to pass a ban like this to educate and enforce? How would that work for your officers?
We'll start with the first one, that's probably the simplest. The education component really comes through driver's ed in school, because it's for the graduated driver's license permit, it's 18 or under. So once you get your driver's license, all that information's provided, the schools do a really good driver's ed program. That's where the education component comes in. I can tell you, the Urbana Police Department does very little with education. We don't have the resources to do that. We do have enforcement. I could run the statistics to see how many tickets we've given, my guess would be relatively few. I constantly get complaints for red lights being run, stop signs being run, speeding here, speeding there. With the resources we have, we do a fair job of taking care of all of those things. Getting to the second part of your question, the resources we would have to deal with a total ban, we would shift our priorities. Essentially, that's what we would do. Certainly, we can run extra details, which we do, step details to take care of specific areas that are of concern. But as, as one gentleman said, we can't get them all, and, and certainly, that would be the case with this also.
When you say shift priorities, you mean shift them away from the intersections where people are running stop signs and we're putting step details there? What would we shift our priorities away from to put enforcement attention towards this behavior?
That would be a, a discussion that I would have to have with my staff, and we'd have to figure that out. Certainly, some of that would be shifting away from other traffic priorities that we do. We could certainly find some time to increase our efforts in this area. Certainly, there's bicycle safety pedestrian-type issues that this council has had much discussion about, and we were trying to focus some of our attention on there, figure out where we could shift our priorities. So this would be yet another shift, so. Does that answer your question?
Okay, then-
I have a question for Chief Beely.
Charlie?
Chief, how do you, how do you enforce the current DUI and, and seatbelt laws?
We enforce DUI either on observation or by accident. Now, it is a little easier, I think, on an accident that we investigate when somebody is obviously impaired. We've had some discussion internally about this particular ordinance and, and our efforts to enforce it. Seatbelt laws are a little different, though, when you come upon an accident. Generally, everybody we ask, "Were you wearing your seatbelt?", the answer is yes. We suspect that generally, after an accident, if we'd asked somebody, "Were you on your cellphone?", the answer would most likely be no. The difference being, if there were two people involved in the accident, there, there may be some information from the other driver, or from witnesses, that a person was on a cellphone. One other brief comment I'd like to make, that I've, I've heard from some of the people speaking, included getting cellphone records to prove or disprove. I can tell you that our efforts in getting cellphone records, even for homicide investigations or very critical investigations, are very difficult. We have to go through the state's attorney's office, get a subpoena, subpoena the cellphone companies to get those specific records. It is a very difficult, that portion would be very difficult for a traffic ticket or a city ordinance violation.
Okay, Lynn Barnes?
I guess it concerns me to hear about the shift in priorities, but I guess it's to be expected. I mean, additional ordinances or laws, I mean, are gonna potentially cause that. The comment that the physicist made, can't remember his name, thank you very much, about getting at more of the behavioral issues, and making more of an impact through the penalties, also seems to be something that, that we should consider. That, that made a lot of sense to me as well. I mean, when you put a penalty out there that's significant, and you take the time to educate people about that potential penalty, that can change behavior. So.
You're suggesting an initial educational attempt and then a sting operation for, set up on certain streets to enforce the fact that we do have an ordinance now?
Well, I, I guess I was thinking, I'm sorry, I was thinking more of a penalty that we wouldn't do an ordinance, but rather, we would have penalties for, like aggravated battery, or, you know, aggravated driving, or, I mean, it's not probably the right phrase, but, you know, when you cause something and, and you were on a cellphone, then the, the penalty is exorbitant. The penalty's awful. And so people are like, "Man, I'm not gonna do that, I don't, I can't, I don't, I don't wanna get in trouble." And so people do it because they see what the result could be.
Okay, thank you. Okay, well, we'll go to Charlie and then to the Mayor.
A question for Chief Beely, then. You know, in a, in a car accident, or in an accident that involves the death of a pedestrian or the death of a, a person in a car, would that be sufficient grounds to get a subpoena from the state's attorney?
Most certainly, yeah. And I'm not minimizing, we could, just injury accidents, we may be able to do things like that. Just the routine, every time we stop somebody, trying to prove, as the city attorney said, you know, if we wrote 50 tickets a day, let's say, to try and prove all 50 of those through subpoena and cellphone records, but yes, we could do that.
My, my intention in a lot of this was that, you know, I know enforcing some laws may be difficult, but we do them anyway, you know, we have them anyway because they're the right thing to do. We have seatbelts, laws, DUI, and so on. And, you know, the signal, you know, I'd like to get a signal out there that says, you know, using a cellphone in Urbana is very expensive, you know, I think that gets a message across and would, would help it. It'd be nice if police could monitor all distracted driving, but, you know, there's a lot that goes on that just gets totally missed. My biggest, my biggest concern is, is when there is an accident, particularly when there's an injury involved, that the police have some mechanism to enforce the law. I think that's, you know, you know, that's when you find out, is somebody drunk, is that when you find out somebody's got, you know, not wearing a seatbelt. That, to me, is, is where we really find the impact of, of a cellphone ban.
Mayor?
Well, when we, when we talked about people clearing their sidewalks, a lot of people cleared their sidewalks, even though we didn't pass an ordinance. And I do think that if you pass an ordinance, you're not gonna be able to enforce it perfectly, but it's to get people to think about it. And I wouldn't make an exception and say hands-free is okay. I mean, you just, even if that's harder to prove, proving it in court isn't the only thing, because there's an education factor here, and you're changing the way people think about it and how they behave. And we could have signs that say what the fine is if you're in an accident because of a cellphone. And I think you'd see a reduction in the problem, even though it wouldn't be 100%.
And there'd have to be some signage placed at the city borders, because we have a lot of people who cross back and forth between our cities, and they would have to know when they were entering a cell-free zone.
Danielle?
I have a couple of comments, but just to start with questions, maybe Charlie can answer this, which is, I know that your website mentioned that champagne, I don't know if they formally consider it or not, but that their position is they're not interested in taking this up at the time, do you, at this time. Do you have any details about where champagne stands on this? Any additional details?
No, just what I read in the newspaper.
Okay. The second question I have is, what, what, especially since you've done a lot of the initiative on this, Charlie, how do you think we should, if we were to enact something, we would educate people about its existence, such that we would really reach the widest possible audience, not just the news gazette readers?
Yeah, well, actually, I think a lot of the credit goes to the Matt's Law Group on, on doing the research. I'm, you know, I'm just the funnel that, that tries to, trying to put it all together in one place. I, I think you do it the same way you do the DUI and seatbelt laws. Okay? You, 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 you know, right now, students are being told that they can't use the cellphone until they turn 19. And I don't see any magic thing that says each, you turn 19 and you can use a cellphone better than you could when, you know, the day before, because it's an impairment, no matter what. Now, clearly, you know, what's interesting is we enforce, we have a no-cellphone usage by, you know, these under, you know, under 19. We don't allow school bus drivers to use a cellphone. The CUMTD doesn't allow its drivers to use cellphones, they've got a separate two-way radio system that they're supposed to use. I know people have been fired over it. So, you know, I, I think it is, you know, you educate and enforce the same way that we've gotten compliance with the seatbelt stuff. You know, it took many years and, you know, to, to get the level. What do we have in the state of Illinois, 80, 85%? What's the estimate now of compliance?
I was just looking at some stuff put out by the state, 90%, I think, in 2006?
You know, and, and clearly, you know, if you look at the, the crash stuff, there's a big drop before it sort of flattens out again. And that big drop corresponds to the enforcement and bringing on the, the seatbelt laws. It's saved a lot of lives. And so I, I think that's, you basically approach it the same way. You know, if you start with the driver's ed stuff, and then basically say, you know, you never get to use a cellphone, not even when you turn 19, you know, you're, you're, you're starting with the, the new drivers and, and you keep it that way. And then, of course, when, when something happens, you penalize it big time.
I guess, just, just to, to make a couple of comments, I think that the part that is confusing, is the most confusing to me, is that if the studies are so clear that handheld and hands-free devices are equivalent, which even in the, you know, the comments seem to be a little bit different than the studies, they don't, the study doesn't necessarily say they're equivalent. And I haven't read the original studies, and I wanted to actually look at that piece. It's strange that Chicago, and actually, all the cities we're looking at, and all the states we're looking at, don't ban hands-free. It's so, it's, it's so strange to me that we would kind of be taking this step that other cities and other states haven't done, and yet, we're saying that the statistics are definitive. And I, I guess I just, I'm, I'm not, I'm not an expert in this field, but my common sense tells me, wait a moment, I need to understand this better. If we were to ban, so the thought is, if we banned handheld devices but allowed hand-free, and we started to gather statistics, and we studied it locally to get our own data so we could look at that, and we didn't provide exceptions, because we wouldn't need to, because it's easy enough to get a wire or to a Bluetooth or something, then we wouldn't have to figure out how to make this kind of maze of legislation with exceptions for different things. It would simply be the case that you have to use a device that is hands-free. And then, and then we could see where that stands and, and kind of ease ourselves into it. And it also would help in some ways with some of the concerns about not being, you know, what most people think of as one community. Especially with stuff like this that involves driving between communities, it's just really confusing to people who, you know, are not part of the Hatfield and McCoy legacy of champagne in Urbana, that, you know, but just think of us as one community and are driving the schnooks from champagne. I don't think that they think about it that way. And so it's, I think it'll be really confusing, whereas I think that if we did do something that, that eased into it and said, "Look, you know, we're not telling you, you have to be off your cellphone, but you do have to have both hands, you know, you need to be able to get both hands on the wheel." And then we can see, and if this, you know, if we gather our own local statistics, then we have some data that we can work with- that we can work with where we don't have to worry about who funded the study. So I kind of would like to study it, to start there, and then see where we go from there.
That's very reasonable. And it seems to me that in five or seven years, this technology will be so different that we'll be all having Lernix implants and we won't be holding anything anyway, so this may be a transitory problem, I don't know. Charlie Smythe.
Yeah, there's a problem. One of the things I was going to say is, we don't have research that proves cellphone bans work, because there are no true cellphone bans. We just have these hand-free bans. What we have is the cognitive research that shows that existing bans can't be effective because there's no difference between using a hands-free set or not. So why is that? So if you look at the... one of the latest studies, and one of the ones I referenced in the email I sent, is the Carnegie Mellon study, which actually did brain imaging. And what they found was that 37% of your brain, when you're listening, and it doesn't matter whether it's hands-free or not, when you're listening to a cellphone, in a conversation involving a cellphone, 37% of your brain is off on that and not on driving. So it's a 37% reduction. So that's where the impairment comes from. There's so much taken to having that conversation that you're beyond, just your typical distraction, to being actually impaired.
Did they compare it to passenger conversations?
Yeah, actually with...
In that study?
Yeah. The passengers' conversations are in another one. I was going to... There's another study here. There's two other studies to keep in mind. The Australian study finds just a four times accident rate by those who are using a cellphone in that 10 minutes before they showed up in the emergency room. And they found no difference between sex, age, or in hands-free versus handheld. So that's an important component of that study. And then your other... Okay, yeah. And this conversation thing. If you look at the 100-passenger study, obviously, the 100-vehicle video study that was just done, which is real interesting, there you've got... they give 12 distractions that they list. And it starts with 675 of the incidents, and this is crashes, near-mid crashes and other incidents. 675 were related to handheld devices, period. 380 were passenger-related, 200, 160, 140, and then there's a drop-off. It just drops exponentially in these things. The handheld electronic devices are the big-ticket item. They're the low-hanging fruit. And in that same study, they assigned risks and exposure rates and so on. There's a whole bunch of statistics there. But what they found was that having a passenger in the car can sometimes be beneficial. So that one is both passengers can be causing problems and passengers can be beneficial. So there's nowhere that has shown that cellphones pose an advantage, give you a positive benefit. All of the stuff shows that it's a negative.
I have a feeling that we're not going to be able to solve this problem tonight if we're going to start debating the very specifics of these very minute studies, which we are not all specifically trained to understand. So I'm suggesting that there might be a motion now about how to proceed. But first, let Heather ask a question and then we'll go on to other things.
My question has to do with the cognitive aspect. And I hear that if you're... whether it's hands-free or not, that cognitively, if you're using any device, cellphone device, that you're not cognitively 100% there. Well, wouldn't that be the case with a two-way radio? I mean, honestly, if it's a radio, then you're in conversation. And so that's why I have...
No, no, no. That is... It's a very good point, and this is where you get into the whole issue of exposure. The actual... The thing is, and this is probably why you don't see as many accidents as you might think there are from cellphones, is because the length of time that you're talking, that's your total exposure. The risk is, being said, you're four times more likely to have an accident while talking on a cellphone. But it's based on how long you're talking, how long you do something. When you reach to grab something from your car, it's very dangerous, but you do it very quickly. So your exposure is very small. So your chance of having an accident is very...
Let's try to figure out a way to resolve this before 11 o'clock.
Yeah, we've got 15 minutes. We're getting there, Dennis. I'd like to explain, it's a very important point. So the issue with the two-way radio is that it's a very quick interaction. And yeah, it's a fine point, and it is dangerous, but the whole thing is, okay, you push a button and you're not having to dial. That's important. You can reach out, grab it, and say something real quickly, but the whole point is that it's going to be a very quick interaction and has to be done in a safe manner. Absolutely. And so, yeah, it's total exposure time is what you have to do. We've had two-way radios in existence in cars for a long time. I'm sure that there's some attributable accident rate to these things.
Let's work on this study of two-way radios at a future time. Mayor.
I just wanted to respond to that question about how would we educate people, because if we pass something, there's going to be plenty of publicity about it. Especially if we do something that's different from Chicago or something. If we're the only one in Illinois that has a certain kind of legislation, there's going to be a lot of publicity about it. So people will hear about it and they'll think about it.
Is there a way of moving this conversation forward at this time?
I'll make a motion. I'd like to move to direct staff, in this case, Ron in particular, to work with other staff to develop an ordinance along the lines that I've proposed, banning the use of cellphones, as we've discussed tonight, while driving.
Okay, there's a motion to direct staff to build this ordinance, and it was seconded by Robert Lewis.
Before you go on, could I get a clarification?
Yeah.
I just want to clarify, there've been a lot of ideas that have gone back and forth. Are we talking about a total ban or a hands-free?
That's what I just said, was a total ban along the lines of what I've said here. If I could speak to the motion.
Go ahead. And then we'll have comments.
Yeah, I'll try to summarize some of the things that have already come out here tonight. I think we all know that cellphones and related electronics are the single biggest distraction while driving. The current estimate is one in 10. David Iseman said one in five is his experience, and that might be, in a town like ours, a lot of young people who like to talk, that it might be higher than average. We've got 30 really good studies. There are supposedly 125 studies out there. And it reminds me a lot of the tobacco and cancer link, a lot of people tried to deny for many years. Many are reluctant to act until the date is perfect, and action can be certain to be perfectly effective. But however, what's the cost of that delay? I've talked about the 100-car study, which I think is really interesting. The thing is, I don't have a lot of faith in the federal highway administration to come through on this one. It took them years to develop seatbelt laws, and it took the political group MAD to push for and get our present anti-alcohol laws. The technical data followed later. I don't think waiting for large bureaucracies to get their act together is always the best course of action. Interestingly, the national highway transportation safety recommendations is against the use of cellphones. They encourage the banning their use among younger drivers. That's why we've got the bans among younger drivers. They were at least willing to go out that far and say, "You should ban these." We have places that are banning text messaging. We've got countries doing that. We've got a couple of states already in the United States that have done that. The Teamsters Union recommends that its member truck drivers not use cellphones while driving. And we clearly know that for those of us in the upper half of the age bracket, we don't multitask like we used to. I mentioned the CUMTD. The thing is, I know consultants and real estate agents and such love their cellphones, but they were able to function just fine before they existed. In fact, we all functioned just fine before they existed. I think part of... What I'm seeing, the popularity, Paul, if you believe the News-Gazette survey, it's running 80% in favor of a cellphone ban. Nationally, there's a 2:1 ratio in favor of a cellphone ban. I think that it's a popular thing. I don't think we'd suffer political consequences for doing something progressive. Now, I've said it's all about relative risk, and the current estimate for cellphones is that they're involved at about 7% of events. We know that fatigue and drowsiness are huge factors in accidents, but even there, it's probably only about 25%. We've regulated sleep amounts for pilots, truckers, bus drivers, and so on for years. Alcohol issues go across the board, where we already set limits on what's acceptable while driving because of the impairment caused by drinking. Why have private companies set policies against the use of cellphones? Because they've been sued. There was a... One that I just read about was a tow truck company where the driver wasn't paying attention because he was interacting with whatever he was talking on, and he rear-ended a person and it was a $7 million suit. There's one of those in Texas. There's all kinds of examples of this. And so if I were hit by somebody using a cellphone, I can guarantee you there'd be a suit involved, whether they could afford to pay anything or not. I think it's the principle of the thing. We've got to get the message across to people. Imagine how you would feel if you were hit by a driver using a cellphone instead of somebody who was drinking. We've talked about how difficult some laws are to enforce, but I think, just like with DUI and seatbelts, where there's a will, there's a way. Finally, I'd like to say that it's good to see... I'd like to see our ban live up to its progressive image every once in a while. It usually takes a number of other communities doing some stuff. We've got the art, we've got the progressive art thing going on here. We've set a number of goals for ourselves. They clearly are progressive. We're doing some progressive things, and I think it's great. I'd like to see us be the third city in the state to get some kind of bicycle-friendly certification. Actually, doing something about cellphones is, I would think, a part of that, and having good education is part of those programs. We have a great recycling program that many people opposed 20, 30 years ago, and one that champagne still doesn't have. Didn't stop us from doing a really good curbside recycling program. It didn't stop us from doing multifamily, but they don't do it. There were lots of naysayers as the program developed and expanded. The recycling program built up with a mix of a couple of big steps interspersed with small steps. Waiting for perfect conditions will not get us to better conditions. Can Urbana really afford to waffle while we wait for the next preventable tragedy? According to the News-Gazette last fall, our story, we have a pedestrian car crash per week, and in the last five years, we've had 10 pedestrian deaths alone with 242 injuries. There's been no required reporting of cellphone involvement, but there are probably some witnesses in some cases. But since this isn't part of the reporting, we don't really know what's going on. Nationally, one in five pedestrian vehicle deaths is a hit and run. In the words of Voltaire, "Le mieux est l'ennemi du bien." The best is the enemy of the good. We can't let the desire to do the perfect thing paralyze action. If we wait for the planets and the stars to line up perfectly, we'll never get to our destination. In this case, we're trying to encourage more biking and walking in our community. We want to decrease the death rate, period. That's the goal of all of these things. What better way to make it clear that we are committed to safety than to remove another hazard from the roadways? So I urge you to support this ordinance in some strong form. Thank you.
Okay, we're talking, speaking to the motion. Other discussion? Okay, we have a motion on the floor. I guess we could take a... Yes.
It's unclear to me how many council members support a total ban, including hands-free, and how many don't. And I'd like to actually have a straw poll, just to see where we stand on this. And I'm still in research mode, so I'll state... I was against this originally, and this convinced me to take it seriously, because there's a lot of information in here that didn't fit my experience. So I've come along to this point, but I'd like to actually know how many folks support, with this level of research so far, a ban that includes hands-free and one that is just the handheld devices?
Hands-free.
Total ban.
Hands-free total ban. One, two, three, and a half. And then one that is a partial ban, that includes just the handhelds.
And I'd like to say, earlier, I've been kind of opposed to this. I've been much more favorable of having some kind of penalties, greater penalties, so that we would have more tools at our disposal when people do do this, because I think that sends a really strong message. I'm leaning now toward maybe doing something, but I would be more for the... to allow hands-free.
Frankly, I think if you allow hands-free, you might as well just not do.
So are you suggesting...
We've got a 50/50.
So are you suggesting that Chicago's law is just pointless and that no heights have been safe for them?
Yeah, I don't think there is... The cognitive research shows that there's no difference. The Australian study shows that there's no difference.
My only other thought, too, I'm concerned about, in terms of your motion, we've got to make sure that we take care of businesses that utilize devices for their livelihood. I mean, that's got to be considered, all aspects of that.
Okay, we need two more comments here. I'm going to let the mayor speak first and then Brandon.
I think that it's premature to say what form we want, because we're going to have an ordinance drawn up and we're going to learn more. We'll have questions. And I don't think we have to make up our mind now. People want to at least explore it, then we start debating it.
You're saying it's our first discussion in council. It's obviously not the last.
And if we come up with some proposals and then we refine it. We listen to what the public has to say and we move it along. We don't have to do it tonight, what our final is going to be.
And Brandon.
Yeah, I agree. It would be helpful if Ron would write this up. I think the question of what kind of ban and whether it includes hands-free devices, that's something I also am trying to learn about and understand, why other cities haven't done it. If the research is this clear, then why would we be the only city to do this? So I just want to answer that little voice inside my head to understand that issue and to understand how we would enforce it.
It's completely counterintuitive.
So I guess, I feel like it's good, if we can go ahead, I support the motion, let's write it up, and we can talk about and learn more about and determine where we stand and put in an exclusion or an inclusion or change language later. But to have Ron go off and work on the basic ordinance would be very helpful.
And I just want to add is that I will try my best. I'm not a research statistician or whatever, but I will try talking to legal counsel for some of the other communities that have one and find out maybe what the impetus was for the ban and which way they went in terms of that, yeah, and why.
Actually, Ron, this is actually also very similar to what is done in Chicago. If you just take the Chicago ordinance and take out the exception for the hands-free, it's very much along the lines. I included some of the wording. This is a mix of the Chicago ordinance plus the UFI's policy on electronic devices.
Well, that about wraps up. Whatever we can do, I think...
But I just want to make sure. I just want to make sure now, I'm drafting the total ban?
Okay, guys. All right, we're going to call for vote, and we will. Those in favor of a basic, original write-up of the ordinance indicates I saying aye?
Yes.
Aye? Opposed? All right, we hope to see something drafted in the near future or some such.
Is that going to committee next week or is that...
It needs to be in committee, I'm guessing. We're way not ready for primetime.
Next Monday?
Okay, now, seeing no other items on the agenda and it being like about three minutes to 11, I adjourn this meeting.